Sir, if you think it's area.
Yes. I need a lot of space.
Rather than receiving all of our territory.
Thank you.
It's not reached that size.
Well, this is for tonight. This is for today. This is for this week.
I have a seam in the wood, so I know where I'm centered.
No. I'm doing just fine.
I don't know how much I want to use.
He needs a little extra room.
How are you, Amy? Good.
Hmm, it's years though.
Hi, Amy. I love that jacket. Kind of have one like that in pink. Yeah. Hi.
Hello. How are you?
I'm good.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today, Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. Today is September 24th. It is 1:00 PM, and we are going to start off with Commissioner Schleba. We'd like to say a few words leading into the invocation. The invocation will be given by Senior Pastor Florence Langley Dunham from Mount Carmel Methodist Church in Floral City. And then we are pleased to have Air Force veteran Greg Pell, who served in Iraqi Freedom, Southern Watch, Enduring Freedom, and Noble Eagle I and II to lead us in the pledge. If you're-- please silence your devices, and if you are willing and able to stand and join us, or actually, would you like to sit to speak and then?
Yeah, I'll-- yes, that would be--
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. It came up as Pell.
Thank you, Chairman. It is with a heavy heart that I ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of Paulina Wright. Paulina lived in Floral City with her family, and she was 25 years old. She was tragically killed Thursday night. She is the daughter of John and Karen Wright, the beloved sister of Rebecca, Gabby, Ben, Greg, and especially to her twin, Julia Dawson. Paulina and Julia shared an unbreakable bond, and her loss is felt deeply, not only by her immediate family, but by all of us who had the privilege of knowing her and being part of her extended family. Paulina's kindness, sweet spirit, beauty, and humor touched the lives of everyone around her. She was a light to her family and to ours, and her absence leaves a void that cannot be filled. I pray her family finds comfort, that they will see her one day as she is welcomed into the arms of her Lord and Savior. As we remember her today, we honor the profound impact she had on our lives and the countless memories we will always cherish. Let us hold Paulina and the Wright family in our hearts and thoughts as we reflect on her life and the love and laughter she gave so freely to those around her. Thank you, if you don't mind standing, if you're willing and able, and having a moment of silence for Paulina Wright.
Father, this afternoon, in the name of Jesus, we come humbly, asking first, Lord God, for forgiveness of all sin by thought, word, and deed. We then ask, Father, that as we are here for this commissioner's meeting, Father, that you go before. Lord God, we ask that you touch each one of our commissioners. Lord, give them your knowledge, your understanding, and your wisdom, that as they begin to process the business of Citrus County, Lord God, that they will always keep in mind the people of Citrus County, and let it be about the people of this county. We ask, Lord God, for each one of them and in their respective places, Lord God, that you will continue to cover them and guide them into all truth and righteousness. We ask, Lord God, for your blessing over this meeting, that you keep everyone safe as they deal with the business of the county. And as they do, Lord God, that you will prosper us, that you will grow us, that you will continue to keep us at the feet of Jesus. We thank you for this and all blessings. In Jesus Christ's name of Nazareth, we pray. Amen. Amen. And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg, thank you, and thank you for your service. And I do actually know that your last name is Pelletier. When I have this many papers up here, sometimes the brain turns off, and I just read what's in front of me, so.
No, that's right. That was my statement.
Okay. Nice to know. Good answer. We need a little levity with Holene inbound. Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
This is a regular meeting of Citrus County, the Board of County Commissioners, this 24th day of September 2024. In attendance are Chair Hallie Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schleba, Assistant County Administrator Marisol Rodriguez, and the County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Board, looking for-- no, excuse me. Marisol? Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, we do have additional items and additional information. The first additional item we have is the letter P. It's the local state of emergency for the potential tropical cyclone nine. Additional information on B7. We needed to correct a signature line that was accidentally removed on the documents. E7, corrected recommended action to include the First Vice Chairman authorized to sign--
Is it E7 or E17?
I'm sorry, E17.
Thank you.
Corrected recommendation action to include the First Vice Chairman authorized to sign the FDOT application. H1, we have an update on the row resurfacing presentation. Slide eight, District two list of rows was replaced to show District four list of rows. On slide 15, the total estimated cost was updated to reflect the cost estimated cost. On slide 17, FY25 budget was replaced to match OMB's current FY25 budget of $16,200,000. U1, additional information update on page four, addition of paragraph two under the general fund heading. U1, additional information updated, page five, adjusting entry for the federal-- I'm sorry, for the general fund, item number five has been removed.
Thank you. And are all these additional items already uploaded to the clerk's site? Okay.
Yeah.
So this is just giving-- it's a lot of updates. So just giving notice that if you read the agenda last week, things have been updated, but it is online, so you can follow along. Board, looking for--
Madam Chairman.
Looking for a motion, but I would like to hear P as in Papa before the consent. If you don't mind hearing that first. Go right ahead.
So, Madam Chairman, I move to approve the agenda with the additional information.
And the additional item P heard first.
An additional item P. One.
P. I think there's just a P. So P heard first.
And with additional item P heard first. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any board comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item P. Where'd it go? Drowning in papers up here. Right on top. There we go. So the policy group met at 9:00 this morning. I was the board representative there to discuss potential tropical cyclone nine, which I now believe is Holene, and the effects it will have on Citrus County. The recommendation is to declare a state of general emergency in Citrus County effective for seven days, beginning at 1:30 PM today. I will say that I went to bed thinking this was not going to be a big deal, and then having sat through the 9:00 AM, we need to pay attention to this one, guys. We can just prepare for the worst and hope and pray for the best. So it could be bad, and we just hope it's not. But right now, as of my briefing this morning, it was storm surge up to 15 feet on the coast. This is Citrus County borders, and sustained winds of 110 miles an hour on the coast and 73 miles per hour inland. We will be opening shelters at 2:00 PM tomorrow with assisted living and skilled nursing facilities going in the morning. So now you know what I know, so be prepared, please, and stay safe. Property is one thing. We do not want to lose people. Property is bad enough. Okay? Looking for a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chairman, move to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the proclamation declaring the state of a general emergency in Citrus County. Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Bays, by a noes. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Do I need to call public comment on this? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Would anybody would like to speak on this from the public? Seeing none. Any board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, consent agenda. Would you like to take it in entirety?
Move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Yeah, oh, Chris, this is when you wanted to come up, yes? Is that-- is that why you raised your hand?
No, it was just me and I. I'm here available if you have any questions. We're also here for the conference meeting too, so we can wait till then if you'd like.
Okay. Well, did I cover it substantially enough? Or do you want to say anything else while you're up here about the emergency?
So the only thing I would like to mention is--
Mic.
With that--
Yeah, talk into the mic if you would, please.
Sorry. Chris Evans, Emergency Management Director, Citrus County. So the 10 to 15 feet of storm surge, if you-- as a point of reference, people can understand this. Highway 19 in Crystal River, about where the city hall is, in that area, that's about four feet above ground level. So if you were to take that 15 feet and remove four feet from that, that puts 11 feet of water at that location, taller than me. So you can imagine this is around where we saw with the no-name storm in 1993. This is catastrophic storm surge. This is life-threatening. So everybody needs to take this extremely seriously. We're expecting three to six inches of rainfall, up to 10 inches. That's going to have a cascading effect, especially when we get to, you know, post-impact when it comes to flooding along the Withacoochee River. We're already at high levels right now, so this is going to cause more of an issue. So people need to take this seriously. They need to make their plans. They look-- need to look towards evacuation to a safe location. And with those winds, you know, it is 73, expected inland, sustained with 110 on the coast. But the thing that concerns me is this storm could still move, still move to the right, and it could increase our wind speeds. So this is a dangerous event. People need to take it seriously. They can't act like they have in the past and say, "Well, we're gonna-- we'll be okay," or "I'm gonna ride it out." Dangerous thinking. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I was right. So we're opening shelters at 2:00, correct, tomorrow?
That is correct. School will be open half-day tomorrow, as planned. We'll open up shelters to follow, and then from there, the schools will be closed for the next two days, Thursday and Friday, as we deal with it. Storm impact is expected to be Thursday morning. We have the earliest arrival. We could start feeling the tropical storm force winds about 7:00 AM, but most likely we'll feel them around 11:00 AM. And then, of course, it'll be a very quick storm, in a sense. It's not going to be like Debbie, where it sat around. This storm is moving very quickly, and will move out of the area. That's bad for us, and it's good in a way, because it's, you know, it's in and gone, but it also doesn't help us with storm surge. It's what it's really pushing things in. But it's going to be-- unlike Debbie, which took, you know, a whole day, this can be much less than that.
And do I-- and I'm going to get to you, Commissioner Kennard. Do I understand from the briefing this morning that because it intensified faster and because it's moving faster, that the forecast is considered to be more accurate than it was for Debbie?
So, yes.
In terms of the wind, the sustained winds, because we had this-- you talked about the sustained winds forecast for Debbie. It was like half of what the forecast was.
Right. We were looking at around 60, 73, I believe, for Debbie. We ended up getting 34. And the problem with that is people go, "Oh, now, okay, they're wrong again."
Yeah.
This they feel very confident in, especially with what they have and this rapid intensification of the storm, so.
Well, we just pray that they're wrong. Commissioner Kennard, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, I was monitoring this, the forecast, quite a bit early this morning for some selfish purposes, but also to put information out there, official information, as quickly as we could get it to us. And this morning, when I-- when I left the house and came-- came out here, the forecast then for storm surge was six to 10, maybe six to 12, I saw on one particular site. And now we're saying 10 to 15. That's a significant change. That's-- that's a major change in the storm surge forecast.
So you have to remember that many of the meteorologists out there, especially in the news, they rely on modeling, which is not, you know, any different than National Weather Service. But they're looking at early models. One of the issues with this particular storm is it didn't have a defined eye.
Right.
And they couldn't really figure it out. They knew we were going to have something, but not as accurate as, you know, as we see now with things that are happening. So that's one of the problems we run into, is meteorology is a science. It's not an exact science. They rely very heavily on models and modeling. And in this case here, the National Weather Service, which is getting their information from, obviously, forecasts from the National Hurricane Center, didn't put anything out until directly this morning, and that's when I was able to brief the policy advisory group. So this is the most accurate information that we're getting from the National Hurricane Center through the National Weather Service.
So the National Weather Service is saying we have a forecast storm surge of 10 to 15 feet?
Correct.
Wow. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, that kind of woke me up this morning. So our next briefing is at 8:00 tonight, and we'll have the National Weather Service report at 7:00 that will-- that the policy group will be briefed on at 8:00.
Policy Advisory Group, yes.
So follow Citrus County Sheriff's Office and follow Citrus County BOCC on Facebook. They will be pushing information out as soon as we get it. I'm certainly sharing stuff on my own Commissioner page, but those two are going to be the ones that are staffed and fully pushing information out. We have sandbag sites open as of yesterday at 1:00. They are staffed today from 7:30 to 5:00 PM today and tomorrow. They are open 24/7, if you bring your own shovel and help. But from 7:30 to 5:00, people will actually fill the bags for you and so forth. Ms. Rodriguez, can you talk about county being closed or not?
Yes, so we have put out communication. County offices are closed tomorrow at noon and Thursday. And so Friday, we're going to wade into the next policy call to determine whether we're going to close or not.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
The storm surge is coastal storm surge, correct? So how does that translate to many, many people in Citrus County that live down from the coast, off of rivers, streams?
So if you look at the evacuation map, there are concerns along the Withacoochee River, because that is part of the evacuation zone. When you have that piling up of water, it's going to push in and could push in along the Withacoochee. So that is definitely a concern.
And then what about on the other side of the county, Crystal River and Homasasa, where people are not on the coast, per se, but they're on the water?
So anybody who's-- and I don't have the, you know, obviously, the map to be able to display--
Can we get that in the first part of this meeting sometime, that we can put it up on screen? Is that possible?
Help them where to find that.
Okay. Thank you.
But if you were to view that, pretty much everything on Highway 19, starting in Homasasa to the west, is considered Zone A. Those could potentially be the ones affected by this storm surge. As you head up Highway 19 and start getting into the Crystal River area, that's where you see it sort of bent inward towards the east a little bit, and then it sort of meanders. So it's not, you know, Highway 19 is not a definitive line. It is down in Homasasa, but not up as you get-- as you get up there, so. And then, of course, the issue is it's not just a storm surge. It's going to be that rainfall. What, you know, local areas that are prone to localized flooding are going to see that.
Because the Withacoochee is running high right now.
Very high.
So.
So, okay.
You want to say anything?
Yes. Can we also work with FDOT to make sure people that are at 98, Cardinal, 44 exits, that they're not headed west if they're getting off looking for services? I don't know if there's electronic signage up there, but I think that would be important. And maybe staff can also monitor and put notices up about hotel vacancy inland, if people are trying to get out, and also gas supply, if we can just kind of be mindful of those things.
So we're-- we're already seeing stations running out of fuel, running low on fuel. I call it the panic buying. So yes, I can certainly pass that information on. I know that FDOT is going to be working with the county and the cities, on the state roads, especially for coordination. So yeah, certainly can do that. One thing I wanted to mention, Chair, is that that information is on our website. It is updated. There's a link there, and it has all of the updated information, that everything you want to know about evacuation storm, the storm itself. So, and we will have that continuously updated throughout this event, like we have in the last event, Debbie.
What might be helpful is, once we wrap up this, and then we get to the vote on the consent agenda and get back on this, if you could get that evacuation map and also the URL for the website that's posted up there. So folks that are at home, if they need that website, that they can actually write it down. That would be awesome.
Very good. And if I could, I would like to introduce Jason Smith. He's our new Emergency Management Coordinator. Jason has been with us for about two and a half months, and we're so glad to have him. He's got many years of experience, not only in police, fire, and also military. So we're so thankful to have him here.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Smith. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right. Did anyone-- sorry for the little sidebar. I failed to see Chris in the audience. I didn't call him up when we were talking about the emergency. But does anyone want to speak on the consent agenda from the public before I close public comment? Seeing none. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, motion to approve proclamations, awards, and presentations under item CC1, 2, and 3. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. You want to join me down there?
Those representing 2024 Business Appreciation Month, if you could please come forward.
Those representing 2024 Business Appreciation Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges the importance of the businesses located in Citrus County, and the commissioners wish to recognize and support the business and their employees that provide many of the services needed by the citizens of our community. And whereas the business in Citrus County provide thousands of jobs that promote the economic success of our community and enhance our high quality of life, including education, recreation, environment, safety, health, and welfare, through the contributions that the businesses make to Citrus County via the wages they pay to employees and the taxes they pay to support Citrus County infrastructure. And whereas the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce is celebrating the month of October 2024 as Business Appreciation Month, to recognize the important role and the vital contributions that our businesses play in Citrus County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Business Appreciation Month in Citrus County, Florida, and encourages all residents together with the Chamber of Commerce during their celebrations to recognize our business community for their contributions to Citrus County, executed this 24th day of September 2024.
We are so happy to have another Business Appreciation Month coming up next month. And I know right now our, our minds are elsewhere, and I think we're all right there, but we are looking forward to October because this is an opportunity where we really get to say thank you to those businesses in Citrus County that make this such a wonderful place to live. And we couldn't do it without every business that we have here. So we appreciate having the proclamation once again. I have got flyers for all of our commissioners. We hope that you will be at all of our events. I do just want to say that we've got some great things happening in this October. First, we have our Big Bam Mixer is going to be Tampa General Hospital at Crystal River is going to be celebrating on October 3rd from 5:00 until 7:00 p.m. We welcome everybody to come to that. We're, to have T G H here is such, such an honor in Citrus County, and they've got great things that they're doing and that they are going to be doing, some of it which we may find out during this month of October. Then also coming up, October 11th is our Salute to Business Luncheon. And we are so pleased, I don't wanna say proud, because we shouldn't say that, but we're pleased to have Florida Senate President-elect Ben Albritton is going to be our speaker at that. And I know some of you know what a get this is for Citrus County, is he is coming in for the next two years as our Senate President. He is such a gracious and generous man, so we hope you will all be there. That is going to be at the College of Central Florida on October 11th. And then, of course, we have our Big Bam Barbecue at M and B Dairy once again, one month from today, on October 24th, at, I think I already said, M and B Dairy. A great opportunity for lots and lots of networking, so please come out to that. Got some good entertainment lined up. And again, it always supports the, the Citrus County Ag Alliance, and we'll have lots of help on that. I am so pleased to have so many of our board members and our committee members that are here today to celebrate this with us. Thank you, Debbie Riley, our Chair, Stacy Worthington, incoming Chair, Rachel is Chair of our B W A, Carl is not only a life director, but also back on our board, Jim on our, on our governmental affairs, and also head of the Core Business Center. And Mark, Mark, who's head of our ambassadors. And we couldn't do any of this without our ambassadors, so we're pleased to have all of them here. I apologize that Josh is not here, but right now, the rest of our chamber staff is down Boca Raton. They're at a conference. Josh has just been inducted into the, on the Board of the Florida Association of Chamber Professionals, which is a great honor. So Josh, Corinne, Jade, and Louz are all down there at Boca this time. And I'm holding down the fort and battening up the hatches. So thank you so much.
Those representing National Preparedness Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas National Preparedness Month established the Federal Emergency Management Agency in 2004 is an observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas the state of Florida is considered an all-hazard state, meaning we are susceptible to all forms of disasters, both natural and man-made, such as transportation incidents, severe thunderstorms, tornadoes, sinkholes, cyber attacks, and tropical weather events, in particular hurricanes. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen of Citrus County, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together, ensuring that our households, workplaces, schools, houses of worship, and community-based organizations are ready for any disaster which can reduce fatalities and economic devastation following a major crisis. And whereas Citrus County Sheriff's Emergency Management, Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, other government agencies, and emergency management partner organizations across the county are working to increase public awareness and preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to take action. We want all residents of the great county to check in Citrus by staying in the know all year round and to make Citrus County all hazards ready. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby designate September National Preparedness Month, executed this 24th day of September 2024.
I think I've, I think you've heard enough of me, but thank you very much, and.
We have, if we have.
We do.
Those representing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas domestic violence is a crime that threatens the safety and the lives of thousands of Citrus County residents every year. It is a pattern of behavior that one person uses to gain power and control over another that can include isolation from friends and family, financial, emotional, and physical abuse, and sexual assault. Domestic violence knows no boundaries, impacting everyone regardless of race, religion, age, gender, sexual orientation, socio-economic status, and geographic location. And whereas domestic violence traumatizes victims, harms families, threatens communities, and increases the likelihood for children who are subjected to it to grow up and inflict violence on others in community, threatening, creating a cycle of violence that our community must be unified to stop. Victims require to help to find the compassion, resources, and healing they need. And domestic abusers must be held accountable and fully punished to the extent of the law. And whereas domestic violence is a public health issue that affects all of us in seen and unseen ways. And to address it, we must apply our collective attention and resources to help in the cycles of violence that feed into the myriad of other health issues affecting our neighbors and communities, including homelessness, mental and behavioral health issues, and substance use disorder. And whereas the powerful partnerships between state and local agencies, nonprofit and private organizations, law enforcement agencies and courts, healthcare and legal providers, faith-based communities, and educational institutions are creating a coordinated community response to domestic violence. CASA remains committed to lead the community along with its Coordinated Community Response Team and Fatality Review Team to raise public awareness about how to prevent, recognize, and stop domestic violence. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, do hereby proclaim that the month of October 2024 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This month, we reaffirm our steadfast and unwavering commitment to help survivors of domestic violence where they are and work tirelessly to provide the systems and supports they need to heal, hold spaces for them to rebuild their lives, and share their stories, and center our efforts to ensure no one is left behind, including the most marginalized in our county, executed this 24th day of September 2024.
So first, I wanna thank some of our team. We have our Domestic Violence Services Director, Jenny, our Program Assistant, Marilyn, and our Board Secretary here with us today. So really excited to have some of our team here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, for your continued dedication to our community and proclaiming October once again Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Last year, CASA did provide services to 1,442 survivors of domestic violence and their children through our shelter and outreach programs. We also reached over 3,287 students in Citrus County with vital violence prevention education. In total, CASA touched the lives of over 6,345 Citrus citizens through our intervention, prevention, and education initiatives. Domestic violence is not just a private issue. It's a community concern that requires our collective action. We must recognize that violence behind closed doors affects us all. This past year, there were nearly 500 domestic violence-related cases reported to the Citrus County Sheriff's Department in the county. These included domestic battery, stalking, strangulation, and there's many other categories of the reported cases. We also did experience two intimate partner homicides, both tragic murder-suicides, which is the most common in domestic violence-related homicides, just highlighting the urgent need for awareness and action. Domestic violence can happen to anyone. It does not discriminate, and it also encompasses far more than just physical abuse. I do want to take a moment. I know many of our community partners and agencies are attending storm issues, but I did want to take a moment to acknowledge our Coordinated Community Response Leadership Team. If there are any members here, if you can please stand, there's a couple. This dedicated group includes leaders from the State's Attorney's Office, Citrus County Sheriff's Office, Citrus County Sheriff's Office Domestic Violence Unit, the Victim Advocacy and Division, Records Division, Citrus County Fire Rescue and EMS, Citrus County Clerk's Office, and the Citrus County School Board, Department of Children and Families, and other various service providers. Together, we are working to improve our community's response to domestic violence, ensuring that survivors are supported and that abusers are held accountable. With their collaboration, CASA is committed to making every home in Citrus County a safe home, because we know that safe homes lead to a safe community. Thank you again for your support and standing with us in this vital cause. Let's work together to ensure that domestic violence no longer remains a hidden crisis, but is addressed openly and effectively in our community. Thank you again.
Come on up. She's gonna put the flood zone up, but she's also working to get the URL in a legible size to put on the screen.
Yes. That people can go to see where they live and what evacuation zone they're in. It has all the details. It's hooked into Citrus County G I S. I also wanna mention this. There is no excuse for anybody to say, I don't have transportation to a shelter or a house somewhere inland. Citrus County Transit provides free transportation from their home to a shelter or to another location within the county that's suitably safe. So we just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
Yeah. We're, behind the scenes, we're a little worried about this, the, or maybe not so behind the scenes. I have not heard catastrophic in any of the former storms, at least since I've been a commissioner, applied to Citrus County. So let's hope that the forecasters are wrong, and we can make fun of them later. But as of right now, we need to really take this seriously. So, can you enlarge that? I mean, is it, is there a bug or some sort of tag or button, like, right on the homepage? So just?
There is. If they go to.
Sheriff Citrus dot org?
Yes.
Okay.
It's under the, there's gonna be a button. There's either a button visible there, or it's under Public Information. They should find it.
Okay. That's on the homepage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's Sheriff Citrus dot o r g dot org.
And then that is the disaster page right there that has the information. And then the other one, we also have a link under the Emergency Management tab to the evacuation map, the one, but can you show the other one that we pulled up? So that is the evacuation map. You'll see everything in red is Zone A. So you can see we're Highway 19 and Homasasa, everything to the west, and then as you move up. And that affects also, just so you know, seven assisted-living facilities or skilled nursing facilities, which will be evacuating at eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
And we're doing mandatory evacuation for 2:00 p.m.
Correct, for everybody else.
Simultaneous with the, I'm repeating information, because sometimes people jump in and out of this meeting. 2:00 p.m. simultaneous mandatory evacuation from Zone A, as well as our shelters opening. And remember, the sandbag sites are open today and tomorrow, staffed, they're open 24/7, staffed 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
It's also important to note that with sandbags, they are, they are ineffective unless you put plastic in between them. The sandbags are what hold the plastic in place to keep the water out. Sandbags themselves, sand is permeable, water will go through it. So it's important for people to, to know that.
Okay.
So, thank you for the proclamation.
Before you disappear, anyone else have any questions, concerns? No? Okay. Commissioner Finnegan.
Since you're saying that publicly, I know we have sandbag locations. Do we give out the plastic also? So people have to find plastic, Visqueen or something, and put, and then put the sand.
Yeah. Theoretically, if, you know, if they, they could take, you know, at the worst case, they could do a garbage bag, as long as it's, you know, heavy duty enough. You know, the sandbags really hold the bag and the plastic in place.
I think that's important to say publicly, so thank you.
Yeah. And Commissioner Bayes will follow up on your request.
I also wanna remind, Commissioner Kennard brought in National Weather Service professional who talked about the devastation down south, and he was darn near crying up there, talking. He was really trying hard to hold it together, and this is, you know, a fully adult, strong male, and he was up there trying not to cry because of the dead bodies. He saw the people that died trying to claw their, figure out a way to bust a hole in their roof, because they had gone to the attic and they couldn't get out. Okay? So take this seriously, please. You can make fun of me all you want if it doesn't work out to be a serious disaster, but please take it seriously. Property is one thing. You can't, you know, your property's not gonna be any safer with you there than with you gone. And so it's better that you get out and save your lives and your pets. We do have a pet-friendly shelter as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Okay, we are on to, do we have time certens?
Yep.
H1. All right, so we're gonna do H1. Thank you for the assist. Mr. Eastman in the audience?
Afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members. I just have a quick update for you regarding road resurfacing. You have slides ready to go? All right. So Slide 1, very happy to say that the localized repairs for Hall's River, as well as County Road 46, are totally complete. So we can check those boxes. They're done. As well as, if, next slide, for Venable, that project is also complete. We were expecting Thermo to be held up, but Paverit was able to get that knocked out, so that is also complete.
Also beautifully done overnight. Thanks to county staff pushing for that. So much appreciation.
Absolutely. Next slide. Next slide shows the roads anticipated for F D R, full-depth proclamation. They are scheduled to begin very, very shortly. The geo, geotech firm is out there pulling samples. pulling samples to do their lab tests so they can generate the mix that's needed to do FDR. Talking to the contractor, we're thinking, out of the list, we think Hancock is going to be the first one to be done. Moving to the next slide, the next couple of slides. This is the 24 road resurfacing that's currently underway. Very happy to say that Pave Right was able to complete all of the paving in Beverly Hills. So that's done. They're going to move from there. They're going to move over to Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs. That's an open grade mix. They started in Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs, just so y'all are aware, doing road prep. They sprayed vegetation, what have you, but they have to wait for two weeks for the herbicide to take effect. In the meantime, they jumped to Beverly Hills, where they could actually knock out some paving, and they did it very well, got Beverly Hills done. So now they're ready to move back to Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs.
You hear that, Colonel?
Okay. Next couple of slides are Districts 1, 2, 4, and 5. We did receive the work order and schedule from Pave Right, and we're currently reviewing that for cost as well as scheduling. So that's under review. Assuming they're in good shape, we'll be issuing a purchase order for those four districts, and that work can then get underway when they're wrapped up with District 3.
And none of this is particularly legible, I don't think, for folks at home either, maybe better than it is for us. We have printouts up here, but all of this is available online. And if you need help, you can reach out to county staff, and they'll direct you to it. Or it's actually, this is also on our county dashboard, is it not?
It is.
So you can just go to citrusboc.com, and there's a road resurfacing program tab right there on the homepage.
Correct. Let's get to the Slide 10. Yep, that's it right there, Duncan Field. All right, Duncan Field. This is a SCOP project. This is going to be a more involved road restoration project. It's not only full-depth reclamation for most of the road, but we're going to need to close this road for 30 days so that the contractor can actually excavate out about seven feet of material for about 600 feet long. It's not going to be an easy job. So we do ask for the patience from the public while we detour the traffic, but it's desperately needed. We have a very bad section of roadway. The PO has already been issued. The contract's complete. PO has already been issued, and we are currently setting up a pre-construction meeting with Pave Right at this time. The next group of slides is for fiscal year '25. These are anticipated roads to be completed under FY '25 contract. That contract was just advertised on September 15. We expect the contracts as an RFP to be submitted. I believe it's the second week in October, second, third week in October, and then staff will begin evaluation of the RFP.
Commissioner Schleba.
Well, thank you. I just have a question on both the 2024 and then the 2025. District 3 is almost double of what the other miles are for the other districts. Is that because of the conditions of the roads in District 3?
It's condition of the roads as well as the mileage in District 3.
Well, there's 6.05 miles at 2.5 million in District 3, and then District 2, there's 6.09 miles at 1.4 million.
Yeah, that's due to the...
That's the same, almost the same mileage, but double the cost.
Exactly. And that's because of the repair we have to make for, on the roads in Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs. Those roads were constructed with soil cement base. So in those roads, unfortunately, we cannot just do a mill and pave. We actually have to do an open grade, which is kind of like a crackerjacks, if you like, that's held together with bituminous material. So we have to put that layer down first, and then we top it with a coat of, or another layer of asphalt, the riding surface. So it's actually two separate lifts of asphalt, much more expensive repair.
And are Pine Ridge roads like that?
They are.
Okay, same. So that's why it's doubled the amount?
Yes.
So I just wanted the citizens and people here in the audience and who watch this broadcast that they see, this hasn't been an easy thing, but we have been working on getting the roads paved.
Yes, yes, we are.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Moving on to the...
I'm so sorry. Commissioner Hayes?
Okay.
Well, what is the life cycle of soil cement base?
The soil cement itself actually will last a very, very long time because it's a cement-type material. That being said, if it's exposed for a long period of time and driven on heavy loads, it won't last forever. It'll eventually decay and crumble. But it'll last a very, very long time on its own. A long time, 30-plus years, 40 years on its own. But of course, you don't want to be driving on that cement-based material.
So my que- if that's the case, taking care of it, what is the recommendation then for preservation of this type of material compared to milling and paving?
As a, if I can understand your question as far as the proper...
Preservation of it. So like, how often should you be resurfacing this soil cement?
Gotcha.
How, what's the timeline look like for that? And what does it look like for the other traditional-style road building in our county? And what timeframe? How often should you be doing the preservation of it so we don't get ourselves back into this same situation?
Right. There's multiple techniques to help preserve and extend the life of a roadway. The idea of doing a mill and pave, or resurface and pave, open grade and pave every 20 years, that's not a maintenance program. That's not a pavement management program. It's a way to do it, but it's an expensive way to do it. Once we, as a county, get our road, our PCI score elevated, we can then start looking at other preservation techniques, like micropaving, rejuvenation, et cetera. But right now, my opinion, we need to focus on getting our roads and our PCI score elevated as much as we can, which means paving roads, resurfacing roads, open grade and paving. We need, I would recommend focusing on that first. Then, once we get our PCI score raised, we can start looking at other preservation techniques to extend the life of the roads that we've invested in.
Is, again, you never answered my question.
Sorry.
So how, what does the timeframe look like for that then? If we're planning and we're budgeting for this, what does the timeframe, so if we're doing that on this mileage of road, what does that mean that we should be doing 15 years from now? Or is it 20? You said not 20, but is it 10 years, 12 years, 15 years?
Without doing any other additional preservation techniques, as I mentioned, you could expect an asphalt surface to go 20, 25, depending upon traffic loading, maybe a bit longer, 30 years. It's not unheard of, but that's about the life of a standard road roughly. But again, depending upon traffic loading. So 20, 25, 30-ish?
So it's completely different for Pine Ridge Boulevard versus, I don't know.
As opposed to a local road?
Well, an interior residential road.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Pine Ridge or any major collector road is subject to more trips, heavier loads, et cetera. It's built differently, and it's made to take and withstand different trips.
Thank you.
To tag on to that question, we're doing FDR on all the soil cement roads, or no? Meaning?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, no, we do not do FDR in soil cement. It's, first of all, it's actually more expensive than doing the open grade.
Okay.
And we've actually found, through many years of utilizing the material, that open grade and resurfacing with the asphalt is a very good technique. We've had very good luck, and it's lasted, holds up very well in that soil cement.
Any other questions, Board, before we keep going? All right.
Okay. That's just less of the FDR. You can go to the next slide. Okay, what we put together here is just a brief history of road resurfacing dollars and funding. And again, from staff, we want to thank the board. This is a major, major win for us to be able to utilize 12.2 and $16.2 million in '24 and '25. That is fantastic. Thank you very much. And next slide. This is just a breakdown of the number of miles of county-owned and maintained roads in each district. We have a total, just for reference, we have a total of 1,917 county-maintained roads, and a total of 1,844 miles of paved roads.
You said 1,844?
Yes, ma'am. So the first number, the 1917, that's all roads that are county. That could be Lime Rock Roads, et cetera.
And just like a real estate listing of Acridge, it's MOL, more or less.
Absolutely.
Till we get Light R done, we don't have an exact mileage count, but it's close.
And the last slide I have is, there's been discussions with, about Pine Ridge, regarding Pine Ridge. Pine Ridge itself is in District 3. It comprises of about 25% of the roads in District 3. As you can see, with the additional funding from this board in '24, they're going to be seeing about 32% of the funding, and in FY '25, they're looking about 50% of the funding, 51%. And that's all I have.
Super.
I'm giving Mark all of District 4's calls. You hear that, Mark?
What are you doing?
No. Anybody that calls and complains from District 4, I'm giving him their number.
All good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
All right. Ms. Doran. I'm looking forward to you trying to explain this, because it always gets everybody in a knot every year. It is not new taxes.
No, this is only for the two hospitals. So this is a special assessment that goes on to their tax bill. Those funds are remitted to the county. The county then remits them to the state. The state then matches them with federal dollars and sends them back to those hospitals. I actually pulled up something online that kind of goes over it a little bit more, if you want me to read that, but that, in essence, is what it is. We've been doing it for approximately three years now. So this is just, the brief overview is pursuant to the Citrus County Local Participation Fund Ordinance codified in 2021-822 of the Citrus County Code of Ordinances, as adopted on September 14, 2021. The Citrus County Board of Commissioners will convene a public hearing to discuss, consider, and take action on a resolution setting the rate of collection for a payment due on November 30 of 2024.
Okay, just to repeat that before I open the public hearing, they pay taxes to us, we remit them to the state, the state then sends them to the feds, and it magically gets doubled and sent back.
Yes. So what they say on here is that local units or jurisdictions of government have the option to use the Local Provider Participation Fund to generate and collect local funding to finance the state share of Medicaid supplemental and direct payment programs. And then it just goes on to say, in the last several years, local units of governments have increasingly used LPPFs to fund the state share of Medicaid payments. You know, the state agency used as the state share of Medicaid payments were permissible in accordance with applicable federal and state requirements.
I love government. That was sarcasm font. Thank you. Commissioner Schleba.
Erin, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Davis said, Chairman Davis said is, this is only two entities that are charged this tax. The citizens are not charged, and it's just a pass-through because it does come up quite a bit. People talk about this, but it's just two entities that pay this, collect and pay this tax.
Yes, and in the backup is the listing of the two hospitals. So those are the two entities that will receive the assessment.
I just wanted to spell it out. Thank you.
Thank you. So stand by. I'll do the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against this matter? Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Steve Harris. I'm the Senior Vice President of Payor and Government Affairs with Tampa General Corporate. And I just had some very brief comments about the directed payment program today. We call it DPP. Before I do that, though, let me just say, Linda Stockton, who I believe you all know, she's the president of the hospital, she is taking care of evacuations today from the hospital. And so I know that you understand that's the priority, is...
Of course.
Is safe discharges for patients, or discharges home or to other hospitals. The directed payment program, you got it exactly right. It's a federal program. It's used in most states. I'd say it's around 40 states. It's for Medicaid shortfall, okay? Very, very important problem. So the cost of a patient, taking care of a patient is here. Medicaid reimbursement, everyone knows, is pretty low. That gap is the shortfall. This program enables us to cut that gap somewhat. And the best thing about it, which you also brought up, it's no taxpayer burden, no state general revenue burden. So that's the program. We thank you for your support. I'm here to answer any questions if need be.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate you coming out.
You bet.
Commissioner Schleba.
Sir, thank you for doing what you do. I am curious, and I'm not going to put you on the spot today because there's a lot going on today, but I would like some kind of report of what you're doing with that money to benefit the community. You did that last year. I don't know when that gets on the schedule, but what you're doing to give back with the money that you're getting.
Sure. There's a variety of things we can provide in that vein, so happy to do that.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner Schleba. Anything else from the board? Seeing none, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this matter? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Looking for a motion on H2B and C.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve H2B and C.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any board comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. At this time, you're going to conduct a public hearing, and at the conclusion of that public hearing, you're going to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, amending Chapter 30, Article 2, adding Section 30-41 entitled Disaster Debris Removal from Private Residential Communities, adding Section 30-42 entitled Commercial and Other Property, adding Section 30-43 entitled Indemnification and Hold Harmless, adding Section 30-45, excuse me, 30-44 entitled County Property, adding Section 30-45 entitled Emergency Roadway Clearance, adding Section 30-46 entitled Private Property, adding Section 30-47 entitled Gated Communities, adding Section 30-48 entitled Removal of Hazardous Trees or Hazardous Limbs, Providing for Severability, Providing for Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Codification and Included into the Code, Providing for Modifications That May Arise from Consideration at Public Hearing, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. All right, would anyone like to speak, open the public hearing? Would anyone like to speak for or against this matter? Going once, going twice, close the public hearing. Board looking for a motion on H3B.
Madam Chair, motion to approve H3A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
With regard to this, we've made arrangements with the Clerk's Office to be sure that this gets filed with the state immediately so that it will be effective for, if it's needed, for this impending form.
For this current storm. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Let's make sure that happens, then. Okay, open to the public. If anyone would like to address the board, you can fill out a green card either before or after you do so. You have three minutes to speak unless you're registered as a group, in which case you'll have five minutes. Please let the second vice chair know so the clock is appropriate. Please watch the clock, or at least glance down on it. When you have one minute left, it'll go yellow. It helps me from being a big mani and cutting you off. And that's about it. and cutting you off. And that's about it. Oh, and state your name and address for the record when you begin. Welcome, Colonel.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Zaveska. I live on North Wagon Point in Pine Ridge. I'm here to represent the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association, 11,000 residents of our community. Thank you for the five minutes, and thank you very much to the board for allowing me to talk today. We have two requests for the board. The first is, we request that the board reaffirm its policy for the allocation of road resurfacing dollars. Second, we ask that the board remedy the District 3 funding shortfall in road resurfacing dollars, a shortfall that's approaching $2 million across Fiscal '24 and Fiscal '25, $2 million. Now, you've heard some of this before, but we have a lot of new information based on our engagements with the staff and the information that they've provided us up to this time in the new policy, or the new briefing. So what is the policy? Right off the website, road resurfacing policy, and I'll just read the salient portion, which is, funding is proportionally allocated based on the number of miles in each commissioner's district. That kind of sums it up. All that information has been reaffirmed by the comments of some of the board members in their public comments, and unfortunately, when we've engaged with the staff, they have told us that they have not received that information. So for whatever reason, the word didn't get to them, and so we would like that to be reaffirmed on that one. The shortfall, how did it occur? We start with a bucket of money, road resurfacing money, and we've got road resurfacing dollars in it. And what happens is, money gets skimmed off the top for things like FDR. That's the biggest input right there, the full-depth reclamation on that. Road resurfacing dollars coming from the road resurfacing budget skimmed off the top for road resurfacing techniques, but not counted towards that district's allocation, not bound by the current policy for the distribution of that money. That's the biggest culprit. So you've got this money right here, and it goes over here. Pretty sizable chunks in Fiscal '24, it's about a third of the budget, got skimmed off the top and went right here, not bound by the policy in the website or the statements of the county commissioners. In Fiscal '25, it's about 13%, skimmed off the top, right there. That's why we have that huge shortfall. In our discussion with the staff, Steve Howard recommended the best way to ensure that the staff receives the guidance from the county commissioners is for them to propose and entertain a motion that provides that guidance to the staff. That'll clear the problem up in Fiscal '25. The second part of it is, how do we remedy the shortfall that occurred in Fiscal '24? The budget, a third of it off the top, over here, not bound by those rules. We would also ask the board to bring up and entertain a motion to remedy the district shortfall that now approaches almost $2 million in, $2 million in fiscal, across Fiscal '21, excuse me, '24 and '25. We've been told, take the win. Our roads have been neglected for half a century. We were offered hope that this new allocation process would remedy some of that situation. Across two years, we're now $2 million short. And there's no guarantee what's going to happen when the new process comes in line. So, thank you. So, from the perspective of the Property Owners Association and our residents, we don't consider to win. Half a century of neglect, $2 million short when we're supposed to have hope, no guarantee what's going to happen in the future. Now, Pine Ridge doesn't want special treatment. We only want the allocation of money based on what's in the, in the policy and what the commissioners have promised us in public. We view them as your commitment to us. So we either have a policy, or we don't. We either may honor our commitments, or we don't. We ask that you do. So thank you once again for your time, two requests, that policy, they reaffirm the policy with a motion, and then the remedy for this $2 million shortfall across the fiscal years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel. Way to stick the landing.
Hello. I guess I'm kind of, I'm Renee Bedford from Floral City, Florida. Kind of the same, same issue. But I have, Les Cook was the property appraiser. I guess the last year was property appraiser. He pretty much put a blueprint of how you run this county, or how this county's run. It's about 50 pages long, detailed. So if he wants to know anything, it's all right here. I've got the pie graphs. I was going to print one out for each one of you, but you changed the meeting from 5 o'clock to 1 o'clock, ran out of time. But anyway, I'm just going to cut it real short, because I've only got three minutes. I'm going to speak my mind. I was going to be raw and real, but obviously, I can't do it, so I'm going to read. I speak for the people from the community of Citrus County. The community that was put, that was brought on heritage and hard work, in hopes to preserve the natural history, and keep this county our county, to pass down to our future generations just like our fathers before us, to keep the tradition alive. Along with that, small-town grassroots community involvement and support where localism was governed. A small town done right. That's what y'all's slogan is. That comes from the heart and soul that this community thrives on. It's what makes us the Natricos, unique, real, homemade, not taken over by the need to expand, redevelop, in hopes of bringing visitors and money that they will spend to just make it bigger, better, to conform to the county's mandates of the new norm. I found the 25-year plan. I have it printed out in black and white. So 25 years ago, in 1995, this was all started. We really didn't have a say, did we? Visitors, brings in visitors, snowboards, whoever wants to experience old Florida ways. The very things are done, Heather had done, sorry, excuse me. They come to see this beautiful landscape, the land, our land, the land that are, that doesn't abide by state's economic growth standards. So chairman come up with this 25-year master plan to completely redevelop, revitalize our home, eliminate the old because it's not up to standards, set by someone who isn't even from here, raised here. That revitalize and refacement master plan includes destroying 324 acres of our Whitleacoochee State Forest, so million-dollar golf courses and cottages can be built, two-lane roads being widened with or without our consent vote, because this was 20 years ago. Got an approval there. Are many violations?
I'm so sorry, your time is up. I have to do the same with everyone. But, you know, we will address every comment after, and I have a few for you.
Mainly the 25-year plan.
Thank you.
Chair, for public record, I didn't hear her name.
Can you, oh, I did. Renee Bedford, Floral City. Yeah, Renee Bedford, Floral City, I heard it. Did I, I only won, okay. It's, it's unusual for you to miss it, one of us, yes.
She walked up to the mic. Maybe you heard it verbally, but not in the mic. I don't think the mic picked it up.
Was it okay that I said it? It's all good?
That's good.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
Terry Weber Nellis, Inverness Village is 4. I wish I wasn't speaking about a storm, and I'm sure all of you feel the same. I have an email from Randy Oliver dated October 25th of 2022, stating that the county has broad authority if a declaration of emergency is declared, i.e. hurricanes or other natural disasters. I'm asking Citrus County, as I did after the hurricane that affected us in August of 2023, not to forget IV4. And remind you of Mr. Oliver's comment, you have broad authority. Commissioner Davis, are you aware that IV4 Q&amp;A website was last updated May 8? If you are referring IV4 residents to that site to get their questions answered, shouldn't it be current and contain answers to all of our questions? There is no update concerning the septic sewer. We asked you to post how the county can unaccept the maintenance of a public road, and to post it on the Q&amp;A, and it's still not there. I would hate to think that the county is picking and choosing what they want the public to know about IV4. I didn't get any answers to my questions at the last meeting, and I don't understand why, when you have an attorney sitting next to you, usually the county administrator, and staff in the audience, including growth and development, public works, department, et cetera. What do you recommend to fix this problem? I pray that we are all safe during the storm, and again, I'm asking you not to forget IV4 residents, should the storm affect us. You have the authority to do something to help us. Thank you.
Hi. Carleen Sumper, Inverness Village 4. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, for taking the storm surge so seriously.
I bet you're going through a little PTSD.
I just, excuse me. I just want the people to know, we lived five miles off the beach. When we stepped into our house, there was still six feet of water line that you could see, so please evacuate. Don't try to stay and save your homes, because it's not going to matter. Excuse me.
How much warning did y'all have? I'm going to go a little off.
Um, you know, I was, I'm a cocky person, you all know that. And I thought that I was going to stay there and ride it out. I even joked and had little floating noodles and took a picture on Facebook, and I'm like, I'm ready. I'm glad that I listened and got out of there. I got on Lee County website, looked for the highest ground, above sea level hotel. So thankfully, my car was saved, which was great, because it was, it came to use some people that weren't in my neighborhood, because they needed it. All their vehicles were destroyed. Luckily, I found a ride to the Tampa Airport, which only took like eight hours to get there from Fort Myers, because you just had to keep turning around and try and find a different route to get there. That got me back to Michigan. Excuse me, I'm very sorry for doing this. Anyway, the reason I'm here for Inverness Village is 4, I did send a map of the Boral Engineering Report to Steve Howard, because Commissioner Davis, or Commissioner Kennard, you brought up a point about maybe breaking it up into phases. The map that I sent actually is about 125 lots that's adjacent to Phase 1, and it's rather flat, and it is a lower part of the area. There are no lots required in that specific area for retainage, so we wouldn't have to go through any process for that specific area. And like I said, it does piggyback off of Phase 1. Due to it being rather flat, I do think that ditches and block would actually retain that water. We do not flood. We suffer flow. We need to stop the flow and retain it. You know, I can go out into my backyard that this floods out, and 20 minutes later, it's gone. So we don't need to pump it somewhere and do anything like that. We are at the lowest part. So my question is to, can you please send this back to staff and ask them to really look at what I sent them? Because I really do think that if you can do it in phases, it can be done effectively and quickly. That phase that I have here, that I sent to Mr. Howard, like I said, is very flat. It could be done with ditches and ditch block, and it could be done pretty easily. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually proud of you for braving the topic.
But I just pray that you're supposed to listen. I need to get out if they're asked to.
Thank you. I do appreciate you bringing that up.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Carmen Kupichek, Inverness Village 4. I think that our situation needs to be revisited, just like Carleen stated. In Mr. Eastman's presentation, I noticed on the pie, the distribution of miles by district. And District 5 is the lowest. Everyone else has over 300 miles that gets resurfacing by this county. And, you know, to say that our roads is not maintained, I just don't understand that, but that's besides the point. Previously, I asked to find out, you know, you're all doing resurfacing, it's costing anywhere between, I think I saw between $1 million to maybe max $4 million, based on, on the district. We were quoted $19 million to do our area that's less than five miles, and you guys are covering more than 20 miles at less than that amount. You know, I think he posted like 60 millions and a bit of change. So this doesn't even make sense to me. Commissioner Baze, I am with you. I want to know more information. I want to know how long ago was the streets that are being resurfaced, how long ago was it resurfaced? Are they lasting the 20, 30 years that supposedly it, they're supposed to, and they're not? I'm not getting this. The taxpayers keep coming up and having to pay for resurfacing the streets that are not lasting. I don't believe nowhere nears the 20 years that's being stated, because I've been through some of the streets, and they already have potholes, and it doesn't look like they've been there 20 years. So I just think this needs to be revisited. I think we need to have this looked at very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. Okay, District 3 has 566 miles. 423 of those miles are in Citrus Springs. 423 out of the 566. So when I look at these lovely pages, and I went through them, and yes, you do do things quite small. And when you print it out, it stays small. All right, so let's see. 23, 24. Beverly Hills is going to get 1.6, yeah, 1.64 miles. Pine Ridge is going to get 2.309. And Citrus Springs, who has the major roads, gets 1.45. I know, our roads are almost 50 years old, because Commissioner Baze asked about things. Citrus Springs was built in the 70s. They have the cement base. They had a decent base. That's why they were accepted. Pine Ridge has the same base. That's why they were accepted. 50 years. They need to be taken care of. I looked at all these lovely numbers, and I said, oh, isn't this nice? We got SCOT money. 3.6 million SCOT money going for a road in Crystal River. Is that 3.6 million our 25% share, or is that, we're paying the whole thing? That was my question. Okay? Because when I add that 3 million in, yeah, we're going to spend 14.7 million dollars on roads in 23, 24, if you take all the numbers that were given on the sheets. And I really didn't appreciate the fact that poor Commissioner Baze, her list was not, I printed out this morning again, and District 4, there was no list this morning for District 4. Okay? There was two District 2s. Now, it probably is on there now, because Ms. Rodriguez did say that it was updated. Okay? But every time I've gone on there, it said District 2, District 2, and that's why it said 6.09 and 6. And I was like, you know. Okay, we're going to get all these lovely roads next year. We're going to get a total of, in two years' time, 99.41 miles of residential roads. And that was the thing. Most of the people, most of the people I talked to, wanted to know residential roads. Most of the people, most of the people I talked to wanted to know residential roads. You also threw in other roads, such as the collector roads, such as 486. Now, some of the people around here may not understand this, but 491 in Beverly Hills from 486 to Pine Ridge Boulevard is over 20 years old. It's going to need resurfacing. 486 from 41 to 44 was finished in 2007. That's almost 20 years old. And as you can see, they had to do one little section by Citrus Hills. And there is another section by Pine Ridge that is coming up. This is 16.2 for residential roads next year. What's going to happen to widening 491, which we have to do? What's going to happen to resurfacing the roads we already have? Maintaining the roads we already have? What's going to happen to the traffic lights? The striping of the lines? Where's that money coming from? That used to be in the budget under the transportation and roads? And that's not a small budget. What about when I call in for having potholes? So, I mean, there has to be give and take, and it's going to cost money.
She turned off the timer. I think you were out a while ago.
I'm sorry.
Out of respect for you, Commissioner Lex, I'm sorry. I figured you watched the time. You'd wrap it up.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I would have only gone three minutes.
All I'm going to say is that I'm really, really looking forward to all of your solutions to all the problems that we've been fighting all along.
I've got questions.
Thank you. All right, board? Anyone want to address any of this?
Is there more speakers?
Oh, it doesn't appear to be. Would anybody else like to speak? No? No, we'll close public comment. Thank you.
I would like to say something.
Commissioner Schlebel.
Ms. Rodriguez, could you ask staff to get on the next agenda under my name to reaffirm, get an agenda item together? I want to reaffirm what we, our proposed policy, what our policy is and what we propose to do with the road resurfacing and to address and explain to the citizens the shortfall that the Colonel brought up. And if I could also get a meeting on the schedule too, please. That's my first thing. Renee? Is she still here or she left? Oh, hey. I appreciate your passion. I'm so glad you're here. It's, it's nice that people get involved. We only had 33% of the registered voters show up at the primary. So we need to get more citizens involved, and I appreciate your passion. I am a native Floridian, born and raised. So I don't know who you were talking about, but I know there are other native Floridians on the board. Small town done right is Inverness, not the county. And no one on this board, I have ever heard, ever say, "Out with the old and with the new." Never. And I just want to say that. I mean, you had a lot of things that you said, but I just, I took that, I, I know for a fact, we would never say, "Out with the old and with the new." And the 324 acres of Withellicucci State Forest is in Hernando County. And last board meeting, all five of us stated, I believe, on the record, that there is no way we would, you know, entertain some kind of, some kind of taking away from our state forest. And it was a big eye opener for me. And so I just want you to have that, I just want you to have that assuredness. IV4, I'm going to let Commissioner Davis go into that, but I do want to say something to Dr. K. Dr. K, I understand what you were talking about, the money and the comparison, but you, you can't compare a mile of unprepped dirt road, no drainage, no anything, no base to a mile of that to a mile of repaving an existing road. That's where the, that's where you said you didn't understand the dollar amount. That's where the dollar amount would come of rebuilding a new road and repaving a new road. So if that just helps you a little bit. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Bays.
Yes, I, I think it would be very helpful. I would like to propose that we have a workshop on transportation, road resurfacing, funding allocations. I think there's information that I don't have, and I think there's a lot of information that's missing with the public. And I think it would be very helpful for everybody to have a better understanding of full depth reclamation, mill and pave, tax dollars, where they come from. It's my understanding that, you know, there's a lot of angst when you read in the newspaper or on social media, people complain about, well, Citrus County has the highest gas amount surrounding counties. That is true. We do. But we also option every gas tax. When you fill up in another county, your car, you're helping pave their roads, not Citrus County. There are certain pennies that when you fill up here, that gets returned back to the taxpayers here to help maintain our roads. So that, that message needs to get out there. I mean, if you want your roads paved, even though you might pay a few cents more here because we do option all the gas tax here. I will also tell you, I was at Florida Association of Counties this past week, and we had a lot of discussion about transportation and roads and the cost of things and what's happening. There is no appetite in Tallahassee if you are not doing everything you can do in your county, using all the tools in your toolbox. And it was said out loud, very sternly, that do not come to the table and ask for anything from Tallahassee on transportation if you are not utilizing all the gas tax in your county. And there's many counties around us that don't do that. Fuel efficiencies, electric cars, all the things that are coming our way, gas taxes going down, it's not going up. It's, it's a national problem. It's not just a Citrus County problem. It is everywhere. It's not just resurfacing these roads. It's also about capacity issues. And, you know, what I would like for everybody to understand, 44, 19, 41, those are all state roads. The Suncoast Parkway is a state road. You don't pay to build it as a taxpayer, and you don't pay to maintain it. You do in a, in a sense, but it's not coming out of your local taxes here. So the more that you utilize those roads, the better off we are. And if, you know, one day I'm going to hear somebody say, you know what, 486 needs to be widened with all that, that infrastructure setting out there. So that means you want to take out that grass median and you want to add two more lanes of road at what cost to save you 10 minutes in your travel time? So you're going to pay to expand it, and you're going to pay to maintain it for its lifetime. So it's all about adjusting your schedule, either leave early and, or arrive late. Those are your two options. But we have to start having some really frank conversations. We're not, we're not going to get out of this situation anywhere cheap. It, we're just not. And I think, you know, IV4, I hate where you're at, but I don't think we can get there without having an MSBU out there and getting where we need to go. But I, I'm going to really ask my colleagues, let's have a workshop. Let's really talk about every district, every road, how it's funded, where the money comes from, and let's stop all the misinformation. So I, I'm going to just kind of leave it there, but I think that's where I would like to go. And I would indulge my, my colleagues to agree with that and move forward.
I'll go ahead and go next. Just to tag on to what you said, Commissioner Bays, my understanding is, I believe it's at least Marion, there are some of our, the nearby counties that have the same gas tax, but their gas is cheaper because we are further away from 75. There is a transportation aspect to the per gallon cost. But your point is well taken, that I've heard the same thing at Florida Association of Counties and also in Tallahassee, that if we do not avail ourselves of all local tools to pay, pay our own way, we don't get the extra bumps from the state if we're not already taking care of our stuff as much as we can. Let's see. Renee, the, as she said, the acreage, the 324 is in Hernando. The larger issue was the governor putting out there to do pickleball courts and hotels in state forests. Thankfully, there's been a enormous bipartisan outcry, and that seems to have died a quick and violent death, which is good. And yes, we all did, I believe, I certainly said, I believe I uttered over my dead body. I did get a briefing on the 324 acres by someone very senior in the state who said that that 324 acres is working its way through the process, and so everyone should wait. It wasn't a hidden meeting. All they did was accept that they would look at the trade. And I have it somewhere in my notes, and I'll probably find it after I let my two colleagues speak, and I'll, I'll give you what the stats are. But they only trade when it is enormously, enormously more valuable. And I'm not talking about assessed value, although that's one criteria, the environmental value. So it has to be larger and more environmentally valuable before they will ever consider a trade. My personal problem with that is that I would only want to trade state forests for something else within our county. Because I don't want, I wouldn't want to be shifting our acreage two counties north. But that's not our business. It's Hernando's. As far as keeping the community spirit, that is actually our tack line for the county is where nature and community thrive. That is small town. I almost exclusively shop at locally owned businesses, not just locally owned. Commissioner Bays went to Subway today. That's locally owned, but it's a national brand. I actually prefer the local, 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 like the brands are local, not just locally owned. So I do everything I can to foster that. I grew up in Crystal River, and, and that small town charm is very special to me. Colonel, okay, so the road issue, I, I would need to get tape or figure out what our exact policy was, because there's so many different ways you can slice that. Is it by dollar amount or was it by road mileage? And especially since you have so many horrific roads in Pine Ridge. As I told you in the hallway earlier, Pine Ridge was on the short end of the stick forever. A good friend of mine lives there. He moved in there 20 years ago, and at the time, he was a rollerblader, which I kind of have to laugh when I think about him on rollerblades. But he moved in and he said, "Great, this is a great spot to be because the road is so bad. I know they're going to repave it soon." That was 20 years ago. He now has flowers growing out of the pavement. Okay? So there's no doubt that Pine Ridge has gotten the short end of the stick for a long time. The whole county has because of not taking care of business in prior years and decades. But we are now, and we're going to look forward to getting that all fixed up. It is hard to not see that this isn't really great progress, if not a full-on win in your book, that you have 25 mile, 25% of the miles in District 3, but 32% and 51% of the two fiscal budgets respectively. So that's hard to look at, but we do hear you. We appreciate you. You're one of my favorite residents simply because you do your homework. And you always come in and teach me something, and then hopefully, we're teaching you things as well. So I do appreciate the passion, and we're going to get to it. Ms. Neillis, don't forget us. Absolutely not. You know, I, I don't know how, I don't know if you realize how much I worry about you guys. I really do. I know that that's cold comfort, but I do. If we can look at the questions that they've asked on getting the FAQs updated, thank you for alerting me to that. Dr. Kubitschek, 35 million was the total estimate. 20 million of that was land acquisition. You actually sparked, whoever brought up the 6,000 valuation, the valuation has tanked. I think that might have been Carleen, one of you in the last meeting. You actually gave me a little spark of hope, which I really appreciate. So an MSBU is the only way to fix this. Currently, it is unaffordable, both for the county and for the residents. We don't have the money to bond it. Even if we were willing to, you know, put it on other taxpayers, which we're not, we can't even bond it. And then say we could bond it, you can't afford it. The 6,000 helps, but what will really help is the, going to keep saying it, FDLE investigation. When that wraps up, I am still hopeful that we're going to get an additional source of funds. But between that and the 6,000 valuation and maybe, yes, looking at the engineering of it again, I have, I have not given up. Dr. Kubitschek, we are on an 80 to 100-year cycle. That's why the roads are bad, not because they were built poorly, although in some cases, they may have been in many years past. But 80 to 100-year cycle for road repaving instead of 20 to 25. That's why my friend has flowers growing up out of his pavement. I think I have thoroughly covered everything, and so which of you would like to speak next? Or not? Commissioner Finnegan.
You did pretty much thoroughly, so I'm going to make it very brief. For Renee, we didn't change the meeting, so if you want to stick around at 5 o'clock, there's a final budget hearing. So that's probably the meeting that you thought was changed. We have both. 1 o'clock's the regular meeting, 5 o'clock's the final budget hearing. The only other thing, I guess, that I must still kind of disagree, I don't know, Mark, that we have a policy. I think it was more direction. And the full depth reclamation, I know that you don't like that it was taken off the top, but it, that wasn't really residential roads. Like, you know, Hall's Road was done. That's not residential. That was, you know, by Publix. So many, many, many people accessed that road. And there's some other full depth reclamation roads that still aren't residential, but they lead to a myriad of other roads that have been done. So I think the county did some due diligence to, to get the most bang for their buck and get these small projects out of the way and then divvy up the residential road resurfacing. Commissioner Bays had mentioned a workshop. I think the, the best idea to do that is, you know, we're, we're told that we have these experts coming, and they're going to assess all of our roads, and then there's going to be another plan. So for us even to have a policy of how we're divvying that up doesn't make sense if we're expecting and we're paying for all of these experts. It's almost like saying if we make a policy to, to do it one way, why are we paying all this money to have the, our money spent in the very best way? I think after that, I'm sure that staff will want to come and workshop us and explain how many roads we have, what's the best way is to do it. They're nodding their heads. So I am looking forward to, to when that's done so we can really get a handle on this. I think that we're blessed to have more money for transportation. I think the burn is coming off, and we're fixing some things that haven't been fixed. Are you trying to get my attention?
Nope.
Oh.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I could see how you would think that, though. My apologies. Commissioner Kennard.
I think if it's a possibility, splitting the IV4 road project up into phases is a good idea, and then we put an MSBU in place.
Okay. I do love how brief you are sometimes. Thank you. That's the benefit of going last, too. All the talky people got it out of the way. The figures that I got directly from Commissioner of Agriculture, Wilton Simpson, was that in the last three years, the state has added, at, under his purview of being Commissioner of Agriculture, over $2 billion worth of land into our state forest and preserved land. That represents over 200,000 acres additional. He also is the one who codified the Wildlife Corridor. The wildlife doesn't actually know, the wildlife is, the wildlife is the one that actually created the corridor, right? But the state recognized it and started planning around it. A lot of people don't know that there are, if I recall correctly, seven wildlife crossings on Suncoast Parkway between 44 and 98. They're hidden. If you drive it, you can actually see them. If you kind of peek over, you can see wherever there's a fence, but there's no road underneath. If you kind of peek over, you can see wherever there's a fence, but there's no road underneath, but there's some sort of path underneath, that's a Wildlife Corridor. That FDOT actually planned those around established Wildlife Corridors. And we have Commissioner Simpson to thank for that. He also was instrumental in our Kings Bay funding, so, and he was instrumental in killing MCORs. So he would like everyone to know that he is actually, his record is that he is an incredibly strong environmental and agricultural land steward, so. Because I called him saying, "Man, I need a briefing on this." So there you go. Thank you. Anything further? Alrighty. Moving on to regular business.
Motion to approve E1 through A through H.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E1? Seeing none, any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E2.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment on E2? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E4.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E4? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E6.
Second.
A and B?
A and B, yes, ma'am.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E7.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment on E7? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E8.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Bays. We now have an entry from the right. Any public comment on E8? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E9.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public comment on E9? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E10.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment on E10? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E11.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E12.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schleba. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E13, with the additional direction that starting September, fees go back to the amount signed upon and agreed upon in the contract of five thousand dollars a day.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Okay, dies to lack of a second. Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve E13 with an additional three months. I've had a great amount of discussion, I think they're making a lot of headway. We've also have our contract monitor in place. Mr. Whitdeck, and I think we're working through a lot of the problems with the new warden on, onboard, he's been able to hire. I think we're just starting to see the, the changes that are coming through Corso Vic, and I, I think they're gonna, I think they're stepping up to the plate, and all their non-performance issues will be addressed, and they'll be back on track. And after three months, if they're not, then I'm, I'm willing to move forward with reinstating fines.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard.
So we're given an additional three months. So we're looking at the end of December, first part of January.
We'll, we'll do December. How's that? I think that's fair.
First meeting in January?
Yes.
First meeting in January?
All right.
The...
Why don't we, why don't we ask for an update at...
Our warden is here, how about if he comes forward?
Perfect.
Well, I had the floor. Why don't we ask for an update, say, the first part of December, on where they're at? Again, Steve's notorious for saying, "If it doesn't get measured, it doesn't happen." Why don't, let's ask for an update, the first part of December, so that we can be prepared, that first, you know, when January rolls around, to say, "Here were, here were the, the milestones, have we reached them?" And that gives us a month, then, to be ready for that first meeting in January.
I think that's brilliant, Commissioner Kennard. Commissioner Finnegan.
I understand this, because I was here seven months ago, and I remember the old saying, "What's the definition of insanity? Keep doing the same things over and over and expect a change." And, Warden, this is no slight against you at all. You're the third one, you know, in, in what's happened, and so we were charging three thousand dollars a day, and a Commissioner, I think it might have been Commissioner Bays kindly said, "They're working on things, let's give them this chance." It was reduced to a thousand dollars a day. And that was, for a very long time, that was supposed to be the fix. And then with the other warden, I just wanted a contract monitor, that we couldn't seem to, no one could move that needle for a year. So with the previous warden, I said, "Hey, what if I could get the board to waive fees for six months, but I want a signature for that contract monitor, and that should give you plenty of time to make the changes." Everybody agreed, all the higher-ups, everybody agreed to that. So here we are, six months later, and nothing has changed, except for the, you know, I feel like the jail, Corso Vic, had included these amounts in the cost of doing business. So when it graciously was put to a thousand dollars, it just made the cost of doing business a little cheaper. When I asked this board to waive it, that was really great, but nothing has changed. We have a contract, everybody agrees to the contract, so you agreed to the five thousand dollars. If it really only takes you three months or less, this isn't that much money, because you've saved that in the last six months. So if it's fifteen thousand dollars, we just literally saved them like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that paid for our contract monitor over almost twice. So for me, if you want to come up here and tell us how you're going to do this so quickly, the five thousand dollars shouldn't even matter to you, right? It shouldn't matter. Because you're going to fix this so quickly, you, you've already accumulated all that money in savings. So I feel like if this board implements this higher fee, that's finally going to move the needle. We all agreed upon it in the contract. So, Warden?
Hang on, just a, um, I, let me, Commissioner Schleba, you have something?
I was just going to say, I'm going to support this motion, because with the three months, or the first meeting in January, with an update probably in December, I'm going to support it, because just two weeks ago, we met the new contract monitor, and we're not giving him any opportunity to, to dig into this job. So I think this is a fair, and I'm going to support it.
Do you have anything else, before I bring up the warden? Commissioner Bays? No?
No, not, no.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Jason Snow, I'm the warden at Citrus County Detention Facility.
Might want to move the mic up to where, there you go. Thank you.
Right, so we have, we have made some improvements. We have, we have improved our staffing. These things take time, though. You know, we, we went from over thirty vacancies, which was pretty consistent for a very long time, to September first, we actually had no vacancies, and we actually had plans to over-hire staff, with, with plans in place due to attrition. I mean, we, we lose staff, everybody loses staff. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we looked at doing the over-hiring. We currently have five vacancies, but we're, again, looking to hire and to continue to hire. We have five people that are going through class right now, that we didn't need to hire, but we did, because we knew, looking at the model, over the last six months or so, what the need was, and we're hiring that need.
Historical attrition, in other words?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else? He was, the new contract monitor was only on site two weeks ago, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and we, we've had many discussions, and we've had discussions about staffing. There, there were some questions in the discussion about, you know, are we accurately counting the vacancies? And I, I really think that we need to look into that. Having gone through, this will be my sixteenth contract, there are, there are some allowances in some contract for partial credits, is what they're called. Like, for instance, if, if I, as a correctional officer, am working a post, and there's an emergency in the facility, and they pull me to fill a need, let's say there's a medical transport or something like that, and I go on that transport, you know, in my, in my, to get partial credit to that, is that in the contract anywhere? Having read it over the weekend again, I didn't see any provisions for anything like that, so is it, is it a hard line? You know, you're supposed to be here eight hours, you were here seven hours and forty-three minutes, for an instance, that we had discussed, therefore, that's considered a vacancy. I, I think we really need to kind of look at those things and, and come to a better understanding of that, because the numbers might actually be worse than they really are.
Appear worse than, is what you mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And for the record, when did you start in Citrus County?
June twenty-four, so I've been here ninety days now.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Any, while, while you're up there, anything else from the board? Commissioner Bays?
I think it would help if you came back and gave us an update monthly.
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to coming in December, I think, just over these next three months, let's just calm everybody's...
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Bring the truth.
Yes.
That, can't, you know, it's always best to face whatever that reality is. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Finnegan, you bring up an excellent point. I do not ever like to say I'm going to have repercussions for something and then not follow through. However, looking at what their staffing has been recently, looking at the contract monitor, looking at the fact that they have yet another new warden, sincerely hope that this one sticks around, and then I am going to support this. But just know, if Corso Vic is listening, this has to stay on a good track. You've got to be in compliance by January, or there's, not going to get too much, I don't think, out of this board in terms of continued grace, so. Commissioner Finnegan?
I will be voting nay, but I want this board to know, I understand and respect where you're coming from, I know you're looking for a solution, and it's, again, no slate to you, Warden, I want to be a good partner. We'll see what happens in three months, I'm just going to stick with my no vote, but I'm hoping what the board is doing here collectively today works. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, did we do public comment? No. Public comment, please? Would anyone like to speak for or against? I didn't think I did, thank you for reminding me.
Hi, my name's Brett Touchton. I have sent you guys multiple emails, and I want to remind you once again, they have been operating this jail for almost thirty years. Three months is not making a huge difference. And when you talk about staffing, and you talk about what they actually have in the facility, certified versus uncertified, when you look at the latest suicide that just happened at the facility, was the post manned, was the person that was supposed to be on the post certified? They're, they're, they're violating so many rules, and they've been doing it for a very long time, a very long time. And it's steadily been getting worse and worse and worse. You can talk about percentages, I don't even know what the percentages mean when you guys talk about that. I can only assume you're talking about percentages of posts not covered. And if you're talking about forty percent of your posts not being covered, every post in the contract was a mandatory post for a reason. The facility actually has more posts than it needs, because it's housing inmates that are doing life in prison. Some of those inmates, if they were sentenced in the state of Florida, would be on death row, twenty-three hours a day in confinement, one day out in the sunlight. That's what's going on at the facility. And I'd be more than happy to talk to you about this, the shortfalls of the security for those inmates. No state detention facility will house those inmates in that environment, none. They're not allowed to do it. So I just ask you to reconsider that, before you come up and, and just give them a, a wave again for three more months, because they're not losing money. They've made a lot of money in the last six months, and they've done a lot of things that, that they could have, they could have helped make it better by now.
Thank you, Mr. Touchton. I appreciate your comments.
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs resident. Having worked in correctional facilities a great deal of my adult life, it's very frustrating for anybody in there if there isn't a guard. It could be an inmate that has a problem, or an inmate that's been hurt, okay? I agree with Commissioner Finnegan. They make a decent amount of money from our county, and they need to start helping us, you know, get their positions filled.
Ms. Janet, can I interrupt you? Can you pause the time? Madam Chairman, County Attorney, I just want to make sure Janet is now under sunshine laws, is, and I just want to make sure she doesn't step in anything, because you will be voting on this, Janet. You'll be here December, and this is coming up in January.
Sunshine law does apply to Ms. Barick.
Okay. Then I will just say, I would have agreed with Commissioner Finnegan.
I would just not say anymore.
Madam Chairman, we're at a public meeting, so can't she say whatever she wants? It's an advertised meeting?
I, I, the question was, does sunshine apply? So the, my answer was, yes, sunshine applies.
But, so I will ask for Ms. Barick, she's not violating anything by saying how she would vote, or anything, as long as she does it here in a public, at our public meeting.
It's not a quasi judicial matter.
I just, I, are you done with the floor?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make sure, Janet, you can say whatever.
I appreciate that, I really do.
I like you, Janet, I want to make sure you don't get in trouble.
And we're still friends.
I just wanted to make sure, that's, that's always saying, so.
If, I'm not going to do anything I'm not supposed to, so if, if the attorney says it's under the sunshine, I will make sure that my comments stay my comments, okay? And that's why I said, it, I agreed with what the Commissioner was saying, they make enough money from us, having worked in facilities for god knows how many years, that, you know, they, they don't make fifty dollars as their profit. So the county needs to be aware of that, you gave them six months. Giving them three more months, you know, that's very kind of you, but it's not going to hurt their pocketbook, just ours as a county.
Sorry. I'm not used to having to do that.
What was the answer? Yes, we're under sunshine? Correct?
Yes, Ms. Barick is, sunshine does apply to her as a commi, a Commissioner-elect.
I'm glad the answer is the same as it was in 2020. Any other comments? Any other public comment?
Chair?
Yes.
Just a clarification on the motion because there was discussion after the motion was made by Baze. So I wanted to make sure that if you wanted the other part of it added, that, that motion was amended.
Commissioner Baze?
Yes, I made the motion to approve this and give him an extension for three months.
I have that, um, the discussion was.
You wanna make it mandatory to come in to get an update each month?
And, um, also request, request an update in December and ending, that this would end in the first meeting in January?
Yes.
Do you want that to be part of your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we'll consider it next and first meeting in January, but do you want it to be part of the, the updates in October, November, December?
As part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Cannard, second? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further board discussion?
Commissioner Finnegan? So you're waiving it September, October, November is three months. But then you're saying January, that would be five months. Three months is September, October, November.
September is already waived.
So December.
So it is, it would be Christmas, Christmas Eve is three months, so within very short period of time after that, we have.
August will be the sixth of six months that the non-performing assessments will not be charged, so they.
It would be December one.
Okay, so they have a pass in your motion, I just wanna be clear, for September, October, November.
Correct. Three months.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for bringing that.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, any further board discussion? That was a good point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four-one. E fourteen, Ms. Duran.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. As you know, we received as a county ARPA funding a few years ago. Uh, we have a deadline approaching December thirty-first of 2024 to have all of that funding encumbered. If you look at the backup, we have one list of previously approved ARPA projects. Some of them have been updated. Um, funding within the water, wastewater category has been moved around. That was in discussions with Mr. Cheek and where that funding needed to be so that it can be encumbered in time. And then there was also one item under revenue replacement, um, for HVAC projects. Um, so there was some additional funding there, um, for a large project that went over. Um, the second attachment has potential ARPA projects and alternate ARPA projects. I spoke with Mr. Howard and Ms. Rodriguez last night, um, and during that discussion, it was brought up about the pavement management services, the road assessment software. That is part of the project or part that would be needed to complete the project that is under the original list, um, for pavement assessment services, which totaled $750,000. In that discussion, um, last night, it was brought up that Mr. Howard would like to bring this back to the board for consideration at a later time. So at this meeting, we are asking you to consider, um, a scanning project for the clerk of courts totaling $300,000, as well as patio shade sales, um, at the Citrus County Resource Center totaling $34,000. Um, we also have a list of alternate projects, and I know I had spoken to several of you, if not all of you, regarding some guidance we had received from the Treasury relating to after the December thirty-first, 2024 deadline and having some additional ARPA projects that had been approved, um, for use of those funds. Um, so you can see, there is a list of those projects. Some we have estimates for, some we do not, they're just categories. Um, if there's anything, um, the board would like to have added, if there's any consensus about, um, the potential projects or the alternate projects, um, we would appreciate that guidance. You know, our goal is to have the departments be able to encumber that funding. We do not want to have to send any of that funding, um, back to the government.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Is it possible, um, Cheryl, that's what I was trying to mouth to you, my, it's, whoops, I just lost it. It's, it's snail crawling here. I can't seem to get it up in front of me and I'd love to look at it again while she's talking about the projects. I didn't know if we could get that up on the other screen. That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm having the same problem, though, so having something on the screen would be helpful.
Thank you.
Or, or your cop, printed copy.
I also have a printed copy if anyone needs it.
All of you, uh, old school people, when, oh, it came up! It came up, yes!
Thank you. Mine's starting to move more. Maybe Cat's working some magic back there, huh? Do you need this back, Commissioner Baze, or can I look at it?
I'll share her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. She's got it up, so we can just look at it together.
Mine's almost there. There we go.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cannard?
I don't have an issue with the, um, the clerk of court document scanning expense. I am concerned about the, um, the patio shade sales at the Resource Center and the parking lot lights at the Resource Center. Is that, is the Resource Center operational at night when we need lights out there? And we're spending, what, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars? Are we just trying to get rid of money or are these things real needs?
So both of those projects were submitted during our CIP, um, budgeting phase this year. I believe Mr. Head's coming to discuss that.
Yes, Mr. Head, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Eric Head, Community Services Director. On the shade sales, if you're familiar with the Resource Center, that is the large area where there used to be a pool at that facility that was, that was covered years ago. Those have just created a lot of sun damage and it is part of the regular maintenance to get those replaced. They're starting to tear in areas and things like that, so that is a, that is an open, open resource area where the Resource Center and the seniors use on a regular basis. On the lighting, um, it is standard parking lot lighting. That parking lot does get used. We do have other folks that have space there, um, and of course, in the wintertime, when it gets dark at, at five, five-thirty, those are when those used most of the time. So it would be a matter of, of time of year and early mornings.
And just to be clear, the parking lot project right now is one of the alternate projects, so it's not one of the projects that, um, would be encumbered at this time. It would just be an alternate in case another project, say, came in under budget or another project we attempted to do became not feasible.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I think if we're looking at alternate projects, things that, um, seem very, very important would be roof. I would, I would say that would probably be most important if we, if we need roof repairs, uh, HVAC, and of course, all that we're doing with water and sewer seems like they should, all of that should be at the top of the list, in my opinion.
And when we bring it back, if that is, uh, the consensus to put it in order, um, of what needs to be, you know, what you would like funding to go to first, we can obviously order these projects and say, this is where we would like the funding to go to, when available. Um, the one I can tell you for water and wastewater, that funding, obviously for water resources and Mr. Cheek's department, that is in a separate category, that is an ARPA-eligible type project, so those funds have to stay within those types of projects.
Commissioner Schlebo?
I think I actually, I think I just answered my own question. I just had to read a little more, so, thank you, Chairman.
Anything else, Board?
We didn't get into this too much in my briefing yesterday, but I slept on it overnight. What is up with the LiDAR scanning needing software additional?
That is the one that Mr. Howard in discussions last night, um, would like to bring back. So we're not, um, asking for consensus to, um, receive that extra funding for that project at this time. It will come back to you.
Okay. So typically, I would hope a business would present the full cost the first time we talk, not come back for fifty percent more. So, just a little concerned about that. Okay, anything else, Board? Commissioner Schlebo?
Could you just recap? I couldn't hear what the other board members were saying, uh, to put in there.
Um, so Commissioner Cannard had a question about the shade sales and the parking lot lights. The shade sales were asking for consensus to go ahead, um, and encumber those funds and do that project. However, the parking lot lights is an alternate project, um, if there was additional funding available, say if a project came in under budget. Um, and then Commissioner Finnegan, um, stated that the, the roof project she would deem number one, that should get the funding, any funding that comes in, um, if a project is under budget. And then obviously, the water and wastewater infrastructure projects, um, having first priority. And so that particular funding for ARPA-eligible projects will stay within those projects listed under water and wastewater. I don't know if any of the other, uh, Commissioners or if there's any other, um, projects you wanna put? After roofing is roofing the number one you want listed? Do you want, um, the parking lot lights two? Or the detention center or HVAC projects is two? Or is it just you want roofing as number one and then everything else?
Roofing and HVAC projects seem like projects that need to get done.
Yes.
Those aren't going away.
Yep. We have a consensus? Yes, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, um, I know it's the clerk and the scanning of documents, but how many bids did we get? I mean, three hundred thousand dollars for scanning of documents?
I believe, um, Chief of Staff Tracy Perry is here. She is.
So we received two bids, um, so far, Iron Mountain and another vendor co-file. This is to scan all of the official records back to the inception of the county, which are currently on microfilm. Um, so it's a very extensive, I don't have in front of me the square footage or the number, um, but it goes back to eighteen eighty-seven. Right now, we only have them online back to nineteen eighty.
Well, I guess my question would be, how often do you even have to go to Microfish to look at something that far back? I, I mean, it's the, you know, it's the.
It's not just our office that has to go back and look at those records. Um, we have the property appraiser will sometimes have to go back to those records 'cause it could have to do with, um, title deeds, property descriptions and such. We also have citizens that come in and use them, um, pretty frequently on our microfilm, uh, to look at those records. Some are because they may be doing ancestry, um, research. Um, some may be because they're, um, actually trying to research something for their current property. They may have an issue with their deed, a lien on it, or something of that nature.
So that's kind of what we're doing is more out of a, more or less a convenience.
It is, but there is, there is a benefit to it. Um, microfilm, there is an expense that, annually, to the microfilm. The microfilm is, um, housed at an off-site location. The films do, um, over time disintegrate. We have to replace those films. Um, so this way, they would be digitized and held in, I'll say, in the cloud, um, so that they would be available. We won't have to continue to carry that expense every year of having the microfilms remade over time. We have some that are duplicated 'cause if, for some reason, we don't have the microfilm here, we have to recall it from our vendor, and there is an expense to recall that film as well.
So what do you feel like your annual expenses are for that?
Um, I would have to get that and get back to you because I don't remember off the top of my head, um, how much because it can vary every year depending on how many requests we get, um, or how many microfilm we have to replace. I know our annual maintenance storage is roughly around ten thousand a year. Um, there are additional costs to that, um, if we have to shift. So for instance, um, and this is just doing official records, but I'll give you an example on the court side, which is not funded by the board or included in this ask. If we have records that meet retention versus these are permanent records, to shift those on a shelf, um, there is a cost to that, too, but that shift can make our annual maintenance costs go down. But there's a cost to shift it. There's a cost for everything anymore.
Sure, sure. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schlebo?
I just wanna tap, you know, tap in on that, um, Tracy, that it's not necessarily convenience, but it's preservation of records, and that is very, very important for future generations. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have your consensus?
You do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E fifteen?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment on E fifteen? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve E sixteen?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebo, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E seventeen?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E eighteen?
Second.
Wow, that's a tie.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? I think that was Doppler effect, she was closer. Um, any public comment, any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. F and G, up to you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Um, the outstanding commission items, we have nothing to report at this time. All items are up to date on our website, and under G, we have nothing.
I, I, um, met with the Chronicle today and there is a personal request from the editor that we go back to, and this does make sense to me, that we go back to at least a verbal highlights reel, um, from the dashboard. And they make a good point that not everyone is, is online as many of us. So watching this, it's the more, the more ways we get the information out, the better. You're not prepared today, but for the next meeting, that would be great, unless the commission wants to argue otherwise. And you have nothing else for under G? Okay, we've already done our Hs, so we are up to I. I can jump out there and nominate if y'all want. Make a motion to reappoint Gaston Hall and add Bruce Kaufman and Chuck. Make a motion to reappoint Gaston Hall and add Bruce Kaufman and Chuck Sanders to the Code Review and Appeals Board.
Second. Second. I was going to make the motion, but you beat me to it.
Okay, I'm going to give it to Schlebo. Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Schlebo. Reason being is I did, I was told that Mr. Belcher, although he's got a crazy good resume, he has not been able to attend. And so I personally know Bruce to be very involved on the governmental. As the Chair, I'm asked to go speak to them and he's on the Governmental Affairs Committee. And of course, Chuck Sanders has an outstanding reputation in that area. So, any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Committee reports. Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Nothing.
I did not have any committees or any board meetings. I'm looking for the county in the last two weeks that I can see. Nope, I did. I have Tours Development on September 11th. Our numbers are down. Mr. Cole was supposed to get me an update for that. Where's my sheet of paper, the numbers? The, we are seeing some red. It was fairly expected, but unfortunately, depending on what happens this week, they might get a lot worse. They are somewhat commensurate with the general slowdown in tourism to the state of Florida, however. Commissioner Baze?
I have no committee reports.
Commissioner Schlebo?
Yes, I had the Veterans Advisory Board meeting and there is a tremendous amount of events that will be happening in November. And I would just ask that the staff, you know, get with Phil and make sure that those events are on the county calendar starting, starting November 1st. There's, I don't have them with me, but you know, the balls and the parades and the... They also have dates for dental health. I want to call it a pop-up dental health that Congressman Gus Villaracas has put in place. So that's some information that should be on the website, the county website, and Phil can provide that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're also K. Do you have anything that's not committee reports that you want to discuss?
No ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Nothing.
Commissioner Baze?
Yes, I do have something. Something that gives me great heartburn. I do not like to do this in the public, but I am going to make a motion. I have deliberated this. I've given it great consideration and it's not something personal, but I do believe that this Board has, and this county has grown and it needs a different level of legal services. And with that, I would like to ask this Board to consider agreeing with me that we need to go for, for head legal counsel in a different direction. So I am making a motion to ask Ms. Lynn to step down as our legal, head legal counsel and us go out for different services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Baze and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. I suppose I need to open that for public comment before the Board says anything. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Wow, this is a first for me as a commissioner. I have certainly wait, done this as a business owner. Anyone else like to speak before I, while I organize my thoughts?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Kennard?
I, I think that if we open up Ms. Lynn's file of reviews, it's nothing but extraordinary, year after year after year. And being in business, whenever I've had an issue with an employee, I have sat down with that employee, reviewed over the differences that we've had, what I feel that they're doing wrong and what we need to do to correct that. This Board, now individually, maybe some of you have gone to Denise and said, "I've got an issue with this that you're doing." Over the eight years that I've sat here, I have certainly had my issues with her. We've butted heads over some things, but we find our way through that. But she is our employee as a Board and as a Board, we have had nothing but positive things to say about her over the years. So I think that it's, I think that it's out of line for this Board just to come out and say, "We want you to resign." We've not, we've not, I mean, when, when Commissioner Baze first started talking, I was waiting to hear what the reasons were. You know, what, what has, what has our employee done that is that egregious? That out of the blue, that we're going to terminate her? Which I think is the more appropriate move if she's done something that is, that is that egregious as our county attorney. And I'm not hearing it. I'm not going to support this. You know, again, i-if we've got issues, those issues need to be addressed. We've got to be courageous enough during the interview. The only, the only negative review that I recall ever hearing about her in eight years sitting up here was Commissioner Smith actually sat up here. And I thought, I thought at the time, he and, he and Commissioner Kitchen made butt heads right here on the dais. But that, they figuratively, they did. But he's the only one that I've ever heard give a negative review. And so I, I'm not, I'm not going to support it. If you have issues with, with the county attorney, then I think you need to sit down. Not, I'm not pointing this towards any one individual. But as the commissioners, I think that, that we need to sit down, have those conversations with Ms. Lynn, and then we need to address that as a Board publicly. So that the, the public knows why we're asking one of our two employees to step down or why we're taking the action of terminating our employee who we just gave a raise to, what, eight months ago? So that's my position on it.
Commissioner Baze?
Well, again, I, it's, I think it's unfortunate that sometimes we have to do these things in the public. It's not my desire. I, I, I did briefly meet with Ms. Lynn. I don't think it's something that, there's, I think a multitude of reasons. They do work in our direction. I think it's been discussed with all of us, some of the concerns of the product and the work that comes out of the legal counsel and working with our administrator and other staff members. I think you're sitting here and being in denial if you haven't been told that. I think that has been an issue. And I think this is just a time with our county that we need to be forward-looking and building consensus. And I think sometimes we're just too far in the weeds and we're trying to negotiate from the dais on some very heavy lifts that this Board has in front of us. And I think that it's time that we have a, a better, that we, that we go out and we have more experienced legal counsel. It's nothing personal against Denise. I've considered her a friend for many years, but I do believe that we're in a position that we need more experience. She came in to this position eight years ago with no government, government background. She was in private counsel. She worked as the, the legal counsel for the property appraiser many years ago. And I, and I just personally, I don't want to get into that in the public, but I, I think that this Board has reached a point that it needs more experienced legal counsel for a multitude of reasons.
Commissioner Finnegan?
It's actually shocking because the attorney and I did not end on a good note yesterday. So, which I wanted to talk to her privately. So yes, I, I mean, I didn't have that many years of glowing reviews and I went along with it last year, but she and I had a lengthy conversation about issues. Of course, we hate to do this publicly. It's hard to discuss someone's issues. I don't like to do that to any of our staff because it's embarrassing for the person and I wouldn't ever want to embarrass somebody. But why, why would Commissioner Finnegan hear from Commissioner Baze and second this? Because I literally just said yesterday, "Let our administrator know what had happened after our phone conversation" because we are trying to set up a meeting. You will all remember last meeting from the dais, Inverness Village Four, asked to have a meeting with myself and then separately asked Commissioner Baze. I was out on vacation last week. So before I had left, I got a meeting and said, "Obviously, we need staff there. Let, let's see how that all works out. I'll try to make myself available." So Mr. Howard's assistant put out some dates. I checked my calendar. I said whatever would work. For Mr. Howard, I would avail myself, but please include County Attorney Denise Lynn. I got a call because she knew I was back yesterday morning and refused the meeting, which I guess she's refused other meetings, which I said, "That's not my issue." I was not asking her to do anything appropriate. I was not asking her, which I said that to give legal advice to our residents. I was not asking her to give advice to me in front of them. She knows the history and all that and I felt like even in silence, it was important for her to be present. At the end of it, she was refusing. I told her if she could come or not come. But I'm done fighting because I do feel like there's many conversations where I'm getting yelled at by our county attorney. And it does feel like I'm fighting. I've also brought up the, the point that I feel like she's not at times acting like an attorney in my or our best interest. It's the sixth commissioner. I don't appreciate that. She understands that. Like you said, we get through it. I'm not a grudge holder, so, and I still don't have any problems. But we keep, we keep doing the same things. And I did not have a chance to talk to her because we did not end the conversation well yesterday. But at the last meeting, when I simply was talking to you all about looking at an ordinance, when we were talking about the different ambulance services taking up our county's time, she wanted to talk and of course, the manager would allow that, but it was debating me. That's completely inappropriate. That's the job for the four of you to do. If we were voting on it, I could understand that, interjecting and protecting you all. If, you know, one of us is trying to say something, I feel like that happens a lot behind the scenes. I get along with everyone, including our attorney. But I think we need this Board, especially moving forward, to be unified. And we need to be working together, individually, our own thoughts, but coming here in the public light and then collaborating. And I think how many bureaucrats probably stay in their jobs, and I feel, I have felt this from our attorney, is that things are said about different ones of us to each other and, you know, to, we're, we're, you're the friend, you know, and, but I feel like I've said to her, "I just want the information. You can agree with it or not agree with it. I just, I just want the legal information." But I do consistently feel steered and I don't think that's appropriate from our county attorney. So those are my reasons. I apologize that that has to come out. I obviously wasn't expecting this. But I did actually say, because I keep Mr. Howard informed, especially when I had to talk to him about the meeting that we're supposed to have. And I said, you know, the, Denise isn't coming, so we need to set a date. This is what happened. And I know there's other times where our administrator and our assistant administrator, they need that legal advice and they've been refused. This isn't good for our people and at the end of the day, I have to care about the people that we represent. And so yes, it, it, it's a shock because I come back from vacation. I have this conversation first thing in the morning and then obviously, you're having issues also. I could assume then, when I heard that if two of us are having issues, multiple ones of us may be having issues. So there it is.
Madam Chair?
I want to give Commissioner Schlebo a chance. You want to go?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, a couple of things I want to address here. And we've talked about this over the past, on, on and off. I've heard it the entire eight years that I've sat here. But definitely over the past few years of more involvement from the Board with staff. And not a criticism, but what I just heard was any of our staff. You have two staff members. This is a policy Board. We set policy. We should not be sitting up here addressing individual staff members. If I had my druthers, none of them would be in here. We would address our questions to the chairperson of the Board. The Chair would then address the administrator and the administrator would follow up at a later point, later time with answers after he deals with his staff members. We wouldn't be hailing them out of the audience to come up here. That's going back to Robert's Rules of Order that we've left. We have two staff members, not any of our staff. We have two. The county administrator and the county attorney. I can completely understand why the county attorney, who is the attorney to the Board, to give the Board advice, legal advice, to keep the Board out of trouble, why the county attorney would not want to attend a meeting like that. And if we wanted her to attend, if we wanted her to attend, that should be a discussion by the Board. Do we want our sta-, do we want our staff member, our county attorney, to go and attend this? Because there very well could be some legal jeopardy there based on how the conversation goes at that meeting. Or the county attorney has to sit there and say nothing, which would infuriate the residents of IV Four, that they're going to pound her with questions. "We want to know this. We want to know this. We want to know this." And anything she says can and will be held against her at that public podium. It's a bad situation to per, to put her into. If that's something that we want to set up, some type of a formal workshop, which they've asked for, then we do a publicly noticed meeting, we hold a workshop and we go through some of this stuff that gives her the opportunity, her and the county administrator, the opportunity to say, "I've taken notes. I will get back with you on this." That IV Four issue is a very complex issue that has been going on for many years. Are there solutions? Yeah, there's one on the table. It's about $120,000. And I've said repeatedly, if somebody puts it on the agenda, I'm voting yes. It's two votes away from solving the IV Four problem. Or we can do it in phases. Maybe that's a possibility. I don't know. But again, getting back to the situation with our county attorney, it is simply not fair, I don't believe, to consistently give positive reviews and then say, "We've decided that we don't want you around anymore." I just, I don't think... I just, I don't think that's fair. So I won't be supporting it. And quite frankly, I hope that none of you will support it.
Commissioner Schleibach.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennard. Um, this is, you know, um, this is interesting. When I, I ran for office because I had a long fight with county. It cost us a lot of money. Y'all know that. And, um, many times I was asked, so the first thing you're going to do is, uh, remove Randy Oliver and Denise Lynn? And I said, I won't be doing that at all because I will be stepping in as commissioner, not a private citizen. And we need to, uh, do the business of the county, not personal grudges. Um, I do want to say two things that I agree with you, Commissioner Kennard, about. We are not to be calling staff up. We're not to be going directly to staff. Last meeting, um, Commissioner Finnegan called staff up and I called point of order. And Commissioner, you snapped back at me pretty hard and said you were interrupted. But I've watched that happen over and over. And I was trying to let the chair know, that is not our job. We do not do that. And then today I was trying to actually protect Janet, which Janet knows that very much so because we're friends. And good luck at this job, Janet. I already feel the weight coming off of me and my shoulders. But, um, Commissioner Finnegan, you corrected me. You, you interrupted when I was asking the county attorney if what, if this was okay. And you made a point to correct me. And, and I didn't go into it because I, I think that we need to be a cohesive board. I'm always polite to you. And I'm always polite to you on this board. And I might not, but you, you know, the saying, you don't hold grudges. I, I see how you interact with staff and you came out really hard and fast on this second. So I'm kind of stunned, but I would hope that this board would realize that you don't just call staff up here, that we have two employees. And I hope Commissioner Kennard, you will keep them in check with that when I'm not here. So, um, that's what I have to say. And you can laugh all you want, but you have, you know, that's what happens. So.
Commissioner Finnegan.
But allow me to correct you once again. I did not call up staff. I simply acknowledged staff could not see Steve Howard, who nodded his head that way. So I was addressing only my staff person, who was Steve Howard. And I frankly, I think staff's here, and I'm sorry to disagree with you, Commissioner Kennard. But when we do address Mr. Howard, sometimes we're voting on things and we could potentially vote the wrong way. And if Mr. Howard has a staff person that could clear up confusion quickly, that seems like the best thing to do instead of being muddled government and us, oh, well, we didn't know that. Now we have to bring it back. So I, I can understand, uh, why Mr. Howard does that. No, and I have not always been treated with respect on this board from this dais. But I have sat here and, and taken it. Um, obviously, things will be changing.
Okay, let's get back to the business at hand. Commissioner Bays.
Again, I, I mean, if you want to go through a litany of things, I mean, there's been one review almost immediately after I came on the board with regards to Ms. Lynn. I actually made a statement that I was not going to do that because I didn't feel like I had had enough time on the board warranted to, to do that. As far as things that are going on, I can tell you my disappointments. There's things with our airport contracts. I mean, I did ask for an FAA attorney, but there's been a lot of things that have gone on in the airport. Uh, both, both the airports, um, and litigation and things that have happened timely with that. Uh, there's been multiple times that I have heard from Mr. Howard about, um, contracts not getting properly reviewed in a timely manner and things moving slowly. Uh, I can tell you that with land use, I think with everything that is going on, I have asked multiple, um, other commissioners across the state and talked to different people. I, I think that we're in a, in a timeline that, um, a lot of growth, a lot of things coming in. I, I have some disagreements, uh, with, um, how we're, we're being briefed and what, and information that we can get uh, out, out of the, the land use and zoning. I would say also, one of the things that, um, we had a shade meeting regarding a lawsuit and we have another attorney come in. And after about an hour, Ms. Lynn said she needed to leave to go to the airport and take people to the airport and left the shade meeting. That's not acceptable. I mean, the rest of us have to make time for that. We come in here, we sit in a shade meeting and then our own attorney gets up to take people to the airport. We also talk about space needs analysis. And I can tell you, I worked in this building at a time when the county administrator sat in the office up there and the attorney was there and the assistant attorneys. You can shoot a cannon off most days up here. There's nobody up there other than their assistant, our assistant and the legal assistant. I, it's, COVID is over. It's time to get back to work. And I, I'm just, there's days that, yeah, I do want information. But it's, you're, you're surfacing around trying to have those conversations and find out what's going on. And, and again, I think that the time has come that this county is progressing beyond the little old sleepy town that it's once been. We don't like the growth. There's things that are happening out there that are beyond our control. And I think that we need some more solid footing in the legal representation that has a longer lead, uh, timeframe in the government world and particularly where it comes to growth management. And, um, I am going to stick with my motion and, um, I hope that my motion will be supported.
So, um, I'll weigh in just on the easy one first. Um, as long as I go through Commissioner, um, Commissioner, Mr. Howard or in this case, Ms. Rodriguez, I'm fine with if they want to bring up staff. But you're absolutely right. Those are our two employees, period, full stop. Um, and I do think it does make the meetings more efficient if we can move forward with answers that are easy and not have to kick it to the next meeting. And I do appreciate the correction. I think both of you have given that to me as chair and I do appreciate that. And I've tried to always just go to that chair. Okay. Wow, this job is not fun. And a job that's even worse is the two employees that work for us because it's a public board and everything has to be aired in public. I've been taking notes of, um, going back into what my thoughts are. To Commissioner Kennard's point, I did not give Ms. Lynn a perfect review this year. Um, I had some concerns which have been discussed. Since that time though, I've had a couple of moments that, um, a couple of incidents that have rather significantly confirmed some of the, um, the overarching feeling I have in, in working with her is that, and we back up for a minute. Mr. Howard and this new board instituted A Whole New Day in Citrus County 21 months ago. 21 months. The difference in this county management in 21 months is stunning. Absolutely stunning. We are turning into, to Commissioner Bays' point, we are turning into a high-performance county that is laser focused on customer service, meaning serving our citizens. It takes a while to turn a barge and this is a dang big barge. Okay? So 21 months, I am really impressed with that. One of Mr. Howard's, um, sayings is, is I don't, when he first came on board to try, and was changing the staff culture and, um, essentially getting rid of any staffers that did not understand this, is that he didn't ever want to hear no. He wanted to hear yes, comma, if. Meaning it's a point of thought to be looking to find a solution. Yes, we can solve this problem. It may have a pretty big mountain to climb, but yes, we can solve that problem. It's a whole different mindset. If you've never thought about that way in your own performance, think about it. If you're always leaping to, no, can't do that, no, can't do that, no, can't do that. That has been a long-running issue between me and, um, Ms. Lynn. And what really came to a head earlier this year, and I can only think of two specific examples. And one happened this morning because this is kind of T-bone me at the intersection. But, um, earlier this year was probably the time that I got the most angry with our county attorney. And that was in my staff briefing when I was given no heads up that there was going to be a big change in our moratorium on IV Four expiring and that we could not extend it past 12 months. And if we, because we had a loophole that we could do a moratorium on new, stop new building permits for 12 months. And, um, I believe she reminded me that that had been discussed at the time, but that was 12 months earlier. And I'm sorry, I need a little bit more heads up. And so does staff need a little bit more heads up. Someone, she knows how important IV Four was to me. That we, that goes back to the beginning of, um, me working with her. And I was livid. And that's a big reason why the stormwater is probably going to end up costing more because we did not have time to sell it to the commissioners, the fix, let alone the public on what that fix would be with the ordinance. They didn't understand it. They spoke out horribly against it. And the commission here did not vote for it. I think you and I are the only ones that voted for it. It was, it went down two, three. And, um, that's going to cost a lot more money. And that's because of not keeping your eye on the ball or being forward-thinking. So, um, this job is brutal. Um, I am obviously the swing vote on this, but I am going to support it. And it kills me because I like, I really like her a lot personally. I hate this job. Any further board comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to do one correction. And that is, I'm not saying that we don't, when, when you're running, when you're the chair, if you're the next chair, Commissioner Bays, we don't ask staff to come forward. We go through Mr. Howard. And that's what I was talking about to la, the last meeting when, um, Commissioner Finnegan felt again to correct me. So I just wanted to put that out there that you need to keep the decorum and protocol on this board. And as the chairman, you did, you asked Mr. Howard. So that's just a correction for the citizens. So thank you.
And I, I had, I forgot my second point because I'm, I'm really not, I'm, I'm a little upset up here right now. Um, in the emergency management meeting this morning, I asked to be polite with the rest of the agencies on the call, when can I release the information? Because I wanted to make sure that we had a coordinated response. But clearly, if this is going to be a catastrophic level storm, we need to get the information out as clear as possible. I appreciate the fact that Ms. Lynn, um, it, it took a while to get there in the conversation. At first she said no. Eventually she said, um, she said, no, not until the board meets. And I asked, what's the difference with Debbie? And she said that because we didn't have time to call a special meeting of the board with Debbie, that I have powers as board chair that I can do a local state of emergency. Not the case with this morning because we were already had a scheduled meeting at 1:00. But it was an immediate shutdown that we couldn't, it took a while to get there to say, we just want to get the information out that we could have as much as a 15-foot storm surge. That's all. And it took way longer than it should have. And, um, that was not, you know. Also, I'm pretty sure all five of us were going to vote for it. And I'm never going to speak for you if I don't have the authority to do so, right? But putting out every bit of information other than a local state of emergency has been declared. That I could not do, which I was fine with once I figured out what she was going for. But to not be eager to get that information out to citizens really disappointed me. Okay, any further board comment before I call the vote?
Yes.
I already did. Yeah, I did.
I heard you say that you were going to, but I didn't hear you officially open it up.
Yeah, I thought I did.
Okay.
Did you hear it?
Commissioner Kennard.
Well, I'll take one last bite at the apple. Um, this is, this is truly not our finest hour. And, um, uh, in tennis, they call us an unforced error. I hope that this board changes directions very quickly before you call the vote. Ms. Lynn has, um, while we've certainly not always agreed on everything, uh, she has served this board and the county very honorably. Um, while individually you may have had some, um, uh, some issues, some differences, uh, with her. Uh, she has done precisely what a county commission hires an attorney to do. And that is to keep you within legal guidelines and keep you out of trouble. She's done precisely that. And, um, I, uh, I'll, I'll let it, I'll let it go at that. I, I hope that one or more of you will change your mind. I've, over the past couple of years that, that this board has been together, uh, there's been a number of issues where I've said, I've advised this board, I felt like we were going down the wrong direction. This one takes the cake. This is absolutely the wrong direction.
Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, I, I know I did, but I'll do it again. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Especially since Madam Clerk backed you up. I trust her more than you.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. I've been coming to these meetings longer than any of you have. And I've known the attorney. And she has kept the board on the straight and narrow legally. That's her job. I don't think she's there to be your friend. She's there to give you legal advice to make sure that the board does what the board is supposed to be doing, like today. She told me, you know, since I am the commissioner-elect, that I have to watch what I do. And I, I do appreciate that Ruth, Ruthie, you know, Commissioner Schleibach brought it up because I don't want to make a mistake. And that's what she's been doing. The, the attorney's been telling you, these are what you can do. These are what you can't do. There's, there are gray areas. I mean, I was president for the Civic Association for Citrus Springs and we worked with Bill Grant. And I had an, I had this person I wanted to really take him, but I couldn't because Mr. Grant was his representative prior to the CSCA having him. So I had to go find another attorney. And that's what attorneys do. They say what they can do, what they can't do, and they charge you. I think for, for all the years she's been working for this board, you need to think about it before you make a decision like this today. Because you will regret this to try and find another wonderful attorney like we have. That she has worked her hardest to get to know government law. And it's not an easy thing. That's why, you know, I, I know the laws for the Civic Association, what we can and can't do. I know things for deed restrictions, what we can and can't do. And I also know a whole bunch of other things that you don't realize I know. But you'll find out.
Would anyone else like to speak? Close public comment. Any further board comments? Anyone? Anyone?
Does anyone want to hear from me?
Yes, and, um, but Ms. Barrett, no one is possibly making a decision based on whether we're friends or not. If anything, the fact that I like her makes this a heck of a lot more painful. So, Madam Attorney.
Just, uh, it seems like the writing is on the wall. So I don't really know what, um, you know, how far I want to speak. But I would say this, um, as far as Inverness Village is for is concerned, I know, uh, Madam Chair, you know, but I've been in extensive but I've been in extensive conversations with the investigator that's investigating on behalf of the Attorney General. That individual is about to prepare a report. It's not in the county's best interest for your county attorney, your legal advisor, to sit down with residents who have threatened the county on many fronts. Kevin Dixon, Anna Long, those are lawyers who have sent you letters threatening the county. I've forwarded them to you. I've asked you to please govern your conversations with the public because of things that I know, that I've shared with you. Commissioner Davis knows that I have always said, I'm not going to meet with the individuals from Inverness Village 4.
And if I may back you up on that, I actually agree with Commissioner Canard's comment on that.
So, you know, I, I can be on the chopping block. The reason that we didn't finish our conversation was because you hung up on me yesterday. So I didn't get a chance to explain this further. And I, I understand. And I did call you when you were on your way to vacation.
Why did I hang up? Why?
Because we were arguing.
Because you were yelling at me. And I told you, I'm done fighting with you, Denise, because that's what you're always doing, just yelling.
Commissioner Finnegan, let her finish, please.
But I did try to call you, and you were on a plane. And you said, can we talk when I get back? And that was the first opportunity I had to speak with you. I'm, I'm sorry that you, you felt it was yelling, but I thought we were both energetic in the conversation. So I'm sorry that it ended that way. But I will always, always represent the county, not you individually. I don't represent you individually. And so when any of you ask me to do something that's not in the county's best legal interest, I'm always going to protect the county. And if that's the reason why I'm no longer the county attorney, I, I don't know if you'll find an attorney who will put your personal interests above the county's. But it is what it is. I'm always going to take the black and white stance. And I think that that's what keeps the county out of trouble. So that's, that's really all I have to say. I certainly am disappointed, but you all have spoken, so.
My, I don't disagree with anything that you've said in terms of, I understand where, that you are always looking out for the county. And that's correct. That's a big reason why I'm the swing vote on this. What, another note that I had down here besides, that I forgot to mention besides agreeing with Commissioner Canard, that it would be a very bad situation to put you in with IV-IV residents in person. I'm not an attorney at all. I don't know if you're good at your job, not good at your job. I can only gauge by what I do this. So that puts me in an awkward position of not having your skill set and having to judge your performance. What I come down to is that we are moving into being a high-performance county. And that is finding, being very proactive and finding solutions. I, what resonated with me when Commissioner Bayes was first speaking is that we are rapidly moving ahead. And I, I personally want an attorney that can do all the magic of protecting the county, but also helping us move forward that much faster and more efficiently in finding answers. And I just don't, I haven't seen that drive from you. You know, my, my preference would have been for Commissioner Bayes to make this a putting you on notice, you know, that she's not happy. And then obviously you have heard that three of us are not happy versus an out-and-out termination. But that was her motion. And so forced to live with it one way or another. And I'm looking forward to Commissioner Canard waiting in momentarily. I bet he's going to. Would you like to say anything in response?
I did think of one other thing I wanted to say, just specifically about this morning. So the local state of emergency is very different today because you're meeting. And one of the things that, that in that local state of emergency that you do is you delegate authority to the county administrator to declare an evacuation. So by posting today about an evacuation before the LSE was signed, that would mean that he did not have the authority because you hadn't granted the authority to call the emergency evacuation. So maybe on the Zoom call today, I didn't make it clear, but that was my hesitation was that he didn't, the administrator didn't have the authority to declare a mandatory evacuation until after the LSE was signed.
Yeah, I was just looking for a focus on what was the most critical information. The, the most critical information is not mandatory evacuation. It's 15-foot storm surge. People west of 19 know dang good and well that that's bad news. And they know that they're, they're, they've already made their decision whether they're going to listen to mandatory evacuation or not. So the weather report was the most key piece of information. So, but, you know, my bigger issue was the IV-IV ordinance, the delay in that. And again, I could just think of two things. But this has been a longstanding conversation in my head with, and with you out, with, between us a few times of being very forward-looking and trying to find solutions for things to serve our citizens. And the, the larger part of your role is indeed protecting our citizens, the taxpayers, from lawsuits. That is absolutely your primary role. But, you know, I'm missing that other component. But again, I'm not an attorney, and I'm certainly not a government attorney. So this is all awkward and difficult, so. Anyone else?
Sure.
Commissioner Canard?
If this passes, and I'm not, I'm not real sure on exactly what the motion is. I think the motion was asking the county attorney to resign. Or is the motion that this board is firing the county attorney? Because there is a difference. So I think that needs to be clarified. And either way, if either one passes, I hope that the headline in the paper tomorrow is unforced error. Because that is exactly what this is. We are losing an immense amount of institutional knowledge. The, the background to all of this stuff is gone. You, three of you are wiping that out. It's gone. You have no earthly idea how long, look at Public Works. I mean, the struggle we've had, we are finally getting back to cruising speed. We're beyond where we were. But it has taken time. When you lose institutional knowledge in local government like that, there is a lot of pain involved for us up here as well as the taxpayers. When you get rid of the county attorney who knows all of the details to this stuff, you are setting this county back, you're setting this board back. Who knows how long it will take to recover that? So unforced error is exactly what this is. And I hope it doesn't pass. But if it does, that needs to be the headline in the paper tomorrow.
It's a very good point with institutional knowledge. Commissioner Finnegan?
To, to that point, I guess that's why people die in Congress. Because we've, we've had, at least three of us, probably more, that's had personal conversations, and we are saying nothing changes. So do we never ever make a change then? We just, you know, now the tail's wagging the dog. So if you, if you never take that leap and try to, to grow out of what you know, there's, you never move forward. There's never a change. It's tough. I, I understand. Will there be a hiccup? Probably, probably, I'm sure. At some point, you have to take a step.
I think, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Canard?
I think that next step would be bringing it forward for a board discussion. That this is the issue that I'm having, you know. And if we were to take just one individual issue, board members, I contacted Ms. Lynn about attending this meeting. I wanted her to go. I contacted the county administrator. He was on board with going. And she yelled at me, I yelled at her. We were both a little bit excited over the conversation. It didn't end well. I want to have a public discussion about this, about our attorney. And so we hashed that discussion out without a, we need to fire her over this. Or, and you could take any one individual issue. But I think we have that discussion as painful as there. And credit to Commissioner Bayes, yourself, everybody on this board. These are not fun discussions to have. I hated the first time when I got, back in 2016, when I had to do a review of Randy and had to do a review of Denise. I thought, this is crazy. How can I sit here and say, I don't like that you can't find a way to this? Or Randy, I don't like that you keep telling me no this, or whatever it might be. But to y'all's credit, these are difficult discussions. But the difficult discussions we should be having are on these individual issues. Denise, I don't like the advice you're, you're giving us here. I don't like that you, it seems you're not forward-thinking. And then let's have that discussion on trying to correct the actions or the behavior of the county attorney. Now, I would expect her response is going to come back exactly what she just is. My job is to keep you between the lines so you don't get sued. If this board gets sued, you cost the county taxpayers a tremendous amount of money. Now, if we want to have more discussion on how we look for these other avenues or how we find a different way to yes, then we can do that. But those, we should be discussing the issues then at that point publicly about our attorney. Rather than, rather than it boiling to a head like this and going, I've had individual discussions with her, and it hasn't, it hasn't gone well.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Finnegan?
The, the reason that it boils over is because we do have individual conversations. We're all too embarrassed, I guess, like you said. But beyond that, and I hate to say this, we are worked. So I know it. I don't know, does, I'm, I'm certain some other commissioners have, have realized that. So if I have an issue, before I bring it up and you hear it, everybody's been worked. I have been given things to say that I've chosen not to say, but then I've heard them come out of another commissioner's mouth. That's being worked. And I have said time and time again, I, I just want the legal facts. I want to make my own decision. We need an administrator, which we have, and an attorney that doesn't have an agenda. That's just looking out for the county's best interest without working the board. We should not be worked. I, I have had deep concerns about that. How do I bring that up? I don't know how everybody else is being worked. So, so now, I'm going to tell you, Commissioner Bayes, I probably, I wouldn't have been brave enough. I wouldn't have been. So I think it took a lot of courage for you today.
Well, again, I, there, this is something I don't feel that we need to, there's a lot of stuff that I don't think that needs to be aired out in public. But if there's five commissioners up here, and I promise you that you all know some of the history. And whether you want to acknowledge it or you don't, that's up to you. But our administrator has told me, and I know that he's told the rest of you, that he has asked for some guidance, some legal representation, and was told, good luck, I don't work for you, and walked out. That's not acceptable. It's also not acceptable to be called into a shade meeting where we have another attorney present to represent us in a lawsuit, and our attorney leave. That's not acceptable. There's a whole litany of things that we could go through. Some could be very embarrassing, and I'm not going to go there. I don't care where you drag it down. But it's this, we all know some of the stuff that's gone on at the airports. I mean, how did we get some of these contracts that we've done? I don't know. But, you know, now we've hired an FAA attorney to help fix some of this stuff. We need better representation. We've outgrown what we've got. We need to look forward. And we, and we need to be forward-looking and just build a consensus. And I am not going to change my mind. Again, it's not, I've considered Denise a friend for a very long time. I'm sure she's going to hate my guts after this. It doesn't change my friendship. I like to do business, and this is business to me. And it's, this is the time and opportunity. And I think that our administrator and our administrative staff needs to be represented. And when I am told over and over again that they don't get what they need there and that we're slow-walking contracts, we have to move faster. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Commissioner Bayes, Commissioner Canard asked you to clarify your motion.
Chair?
Yes.
Would you like me to read what I have in the motion?
You bet. And it looks like Commissioner Schleber was waving me down, yes? Yeah, okay. So you do that, and then Commissioner Schleber.
Okay. I have a motion was made to consider the board to obtain legal counsel in a different direction and to ask County Attorney Denise A. Diamondline to step down.
Okay.
First of all, I want to say, things that have been set up here aren't necessarily off-base. But when I've had a problem with our attorney, I've gone to her. And we've gone around and round and round. That's, that is what we do. As far as me as a commissioner being worked, I'm not being worked. So Commissioner Finnegan cannot put those words on me, and I'm not going to accept them. If this goes through, I'm, I, my term ends in November. And I think that this is a mistake in a sense that if you, if you, if you three think you can't work with her, that's fine. You'll be running the board, and you'll take care of it. I just think that, I think that this is going to make me very happy that I'm not here after November. Because this is, this, this isn't what we should be doing up here. I think that Denise knows that I've been unhappy about some things with the airport and things, but we, we have a conversation. And I don't always like what you say. A lot of times, I don't like what you say. But your job is to keep me out of jail, in a sense, jail. But if, if the new board, you know, moving forward decides that, then, you know, who am I to say? I just have one vote. I'm one vote here.
Anything further? Last call? You're good?
Am I coming to work tomorrow? I, I mean, I, I don't know what y'all are saying. I'm, I'm not.
The motion seems to be a little bit awkward. Sorry.
They're asking you to resign.
I'm not resigning.
Okay.
Well, it hasn't passed yet. We haven't asked you yet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-2. And you're not resigning, so that maybe there's a different path forward. We'll see.
Yes, no.
Okay. Oh, I should have jumped ahead. I didn't know. Oh, and I have to concur with Commissioner Canard. It was very brave. So FAS, Commissioner Bayes and I attended Florida Association of Counties last week. Back to things that actually more directly impact residents. I do sit on the board, and we both sit on multiple committees with FAC. One of our committees is once again going to lobby Tallahassee to get rid of the rule against anonymous code complaints. We have a lot of older folks that live next to meth dealers that they don't want to obviously report code violations. So I, I do understand the staff issue that that causes. But that's something that we, as a Florida Association of Counties, has been lobbying Tallahassee for three years in a row now, I believe. And just, oh- Um, and just overall, the word is home rule. We are preempted by the state a lot. So everything that we push forward to Tallahassee, or a lot of it, is about retaining home rule, meaning Tallahassee doesn't tell us how to manage our business. They do a lot. A lot of the things that we get yelled at as a board are legitimate complaints by citizens. And I have to say, we're, we're blocked by Tallahassee. So, um, Madam Attorney, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, open to the public. Would anyone like, um, I'm sorry?
Chair, can I just comment on your, um, your report with F A C, uh, and code complaints? It, my, my understanding, and I'm sure there's a lot more to it, but my understanding is that, uh, the individual in violation, or the accused, has the right to face their accuser. And so that's why there has to be a name to it. You know, maybe if we're, if we're wanting to, uh, protect the accusers more, uh, we can make it, I guess, more known that people can call their commissioner, and as long as you, I believe state law is that we have to go out and witness the, the violation. I should be directing this to you, I just.
Point of order.
Yeah. That, um, you know, as long as the county commissioner, their county commissioner, or maybe a, any county commissioner, goes out and witnesses the code violation, then it can be reported under our name. That used to be, um, you know, I hate to keep going back to it, but when I first, when I first got, um, uh, to the board, there were, there were violations reported under my name numerous times. And it actually got me in trouble with a friend of mine. He called me and asked me why I called, uh, called him in, but I, I, anyway. Now, the state legislature has clarified that we actually have to go out and, um, see the violation.
Yes.
And maybe that helps to protect the, the accusers a little bit more, since they can't seem to get any movement on that with the legislature. Maybe legally, they can't move on it. I don't know.
Well, it's a topic of some passion with the commissioners there. A whole bunch of them came to the mic in support of it. And a lot of them did say exactly that, and I've done it myself. They report it through our office. If it's in my district, um, I've done it in other districts too. Um, yours, as a matter of fact, at least a couple of times.
You reported me?
Um, no, I don't even, no. Um, and so, yes, I've, I've done that as well. Uh, it's just, i- if they start to pile up, there's not necessarily a speed factor to it. Um, anyhow, but, uh, it is a matter of some passion with the, um, you know, and as far as facing your accuser, I mean, you're either a code violation or not. All that happens is that one of our code compliance officers goes out and inspect, you know, looks at it, and if there's no code violation, then it just goes away. There is, the accusation just goes away. So, I'm not really sure why the legislature was doing that, but, um, anyhow. Uh, anything further?
No.
Okay, open to the public. Would anyone like to address the board?
Once again, Mark Svesky, I live in, uh, uh, North Wagon Point and, uh, Pine Ridge. Uh, quick follow-up to the previous discussions on, on road resurfacing. One of the things I would offer to the board, and I would strongly recommend, is that the county administrator conduct a review of what's on your website regarding road resurfacing and perhaps broader issues across Public Works and other things. When we look at the language that's on there, per B O C C policy, bolded text that funding is proportionally allocated based on the number of miles in each commissioner's district. And yet, there is not a policy, and that's not what we're doing. There is a precision of language required to make sure that the information conveyed to the public is accurate. Part one. Part two of that is there's also a need to have what the public will view those words. Words mean things. And in black and white, plain English, we don't understand all the nuances that go across the staff. How the public reviews those words. When you see it, black and white, it conveys a message. That's why I think we'll disagree with the chair. The Pine Ridge Property Owners Association and our residents, the vast majority of our residents, will disagree with the chair. That language is established in a set of expectations, similar to the public statements that were made, and they were reinforced in that.
What specific thing are you disagreeing with?
I will get to that here in a minute, please. Um, the thirty-two percent and the fifty-one percent, that, we should take the win in that. We would disagree with that, because we see that as thirty-two percent and fifty-one percent of something that is $2 million less than what it should be. So, that establishment of expectations on this is, I think, something that will go a long way in the future to ensure that we don't have the wrong expectations established going forward. So, again, I reiterate, uh, I think the county administrator, someone who can provide that understanding of what the technical aspects of it are, the precision of language to make sure it is a hundred percent correct, while at the same time, understanding that, how the public would view that language and the expectations that it establishes. It is not a slight to what you're saying, because I understand completely what you're saying is take the win. But hopefully, you also understand how this language established expectations that don't make it a win, in our view.
Totally agree.
And that is just one way to help alleviate that situation in the future by having the county administrator do that. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Could you stick around after we, when we recess? We'll have a few minutes before five. I'd like to talk with you, if I could.
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs resident. One of the things that people don't read is countywide resurfacing. And I think the biggest thing that most people were thinking when they saw the sixteen-point-two and the tax was going to go for residential road resurfacing, because that's what they wanted. Okay? And I think that's the biggest problem right now, is the fact that we have all the resurfacing put under one thing. Okay? So that's, that's the one thing I wanted to say. Um, under the ARPA money, I forgot to bring my papers with me, but initially, the pickleball courts in Beverly Hills were put in at three-hundred thousand. And I noticed on the new sheet, the print is four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. Because, well, maybe I looked at the wrong line, but that's an awful lot of money for resurfacing and redoing pickleball courts. And then the other thing, I'm, I'm not sure if I can say this or not. Okay, the general election is November the fifth. I was fortunate that mine was a universal election. But I have not in any way tried to step into anything up there. I am representing me, the citizen, every time I get up here. And I try and do that. Okay, when you did the budget, and you stepped and said that you were going to hold the sheriff's money. If the sheriff's race had been a regular race, there would not be a new sheriff-elect. The sheriff-elect does not take office till January. If it had gone to November, nobody would have been elected yet. So the budget that you would have had to approve would have had to have been approved, and not held up for so, other reasons. I didn't think it was right that you held up any of anybody's, whether it's the sheriff or any of the constitutionals. If you, you know, because that's not your job. Your job was to set the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, according to the needs. And that's where I see it. According to the needs for that department or constitutional. Okay? So, if there wasn't a universal election in August, then you need to step, step back. And that's my personal feeling. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Ah, there you are. It's just like mirrors. If you can't see me, I can't see you.
Same thing. I can't hear either. Um, you asked me a few questions where I got my information from. I took a break and went and got five copies.
I did? Someone, someone may have asked you.
Can I bring you, I, I went and had.
Do you have it?
I got one for each of you. Uh, it's actually from county records. Um, the one about the get rid of the old and revitalize it.
Uh, less cook, yeah.
For the new norm. It was actually a special meeting in February of two thousand and three. I can have that printed out for you, each one of you, for the very next meeting, and we can address that then. So I can have the proof in hand.
That was twenty-one years ago. None of us sitting up here were sitting on that board.
I know. That's what I said. But it's a twenty-five-year plan. It's. Nobody on this board said that. And, and one, in one of those, one of those papers in the packet, it talks about the twenty-five-year master plan. I know that it's not in y'all's making. It's handed down.
I'm happy to take a look at it, but it's.
Just take a look at it, that's all.
Thank you. Appreciate you looking that up. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close, open to the public. Um, advisory board announcement. Take it away.
Advisory Board announcements. Aviation Advisory Board announced vacancy and seeking applications. Announced a vacancy for one District Three regular member position. The term for this regular member position will be through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
And, um, what I would, I would like to do is, um, and I know we always do this, is encourage anyone to apply for the board, no matter what district they're in. They have to list it. But we have a long-serving board member who's outstanding, who's the current chair, who lives in District Three. It would increase our pool if we end up doing a double motion at the next meeting, or whatever. I can't remember anymore, because it's been that kind of day. Um, someone will have to remind me, because I know I spoke to staff about this. But it would be great, and, and the terms are the same, if Mr. Columbuck could slide over to finish the rest of his term in three, and then have the new board member be at-large, because then we could pull from the whole county. And so we'll get a bigger pool of qualified applicants. That's, that's my hope, that somehow, some way, legally, staff can make that happen. Um, Commissioner Finnegan.
Would you mind, before you end the meeting, if I go a little off-book? Only because we had a lot of words, and a lot of things came out, but we had zero resolution. So, um, obviously, my name.
I'll give, I'll give you some latitude. Just please, no more.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we brought up a lot of issues. Commissioner Kennard, so if you have issues, you bring them up. They were brought up. The motion wasn't changed to do anything past. Um, the attorney is refusing to resign, and three of us asked for that. So, in all fairness to the attorney too, since she's refusing, and we have problems, our administrator obviously has problems. We need to do something else, whether that's next meeting, a different motion, or have the attorney come back and address the sport and how all these issues are going to be taken care of. But we went through this whole production, and we have never solved, nothing's changing. So, we, we need to fix the issue one way or the other. Either one way is a new attorney, or if the attorney's staying, we need to have these issues addressed. And we haven't said anything about that. And we're ending this meeting.
Can we have the motion read back? For the clerk, or ring for the, um, attorney? Can you read the motion back?
"A motion was made to consider the board to obtain legal counsel in a different direction and to ask County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin to step down."
Well, then, that's even more interesting. So we, so we have voted to get legal counsel. And we, so it was two things. I, I guess I didn't catch the first part of that. So two things. So we are moving ahead, we're getting different legal counsel, and now we're asking her to step down. So she's refusing to step down, but then we are getting new legal counsel. Did, is that correct, Commissioner Bayes?
That's how I would read the motion. So do we need to clarify the motion?
I mean, I, we voted on it, it is what it is.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Attorney.
Um, Steve Howard has never told me that he has any issues with any of the things that I'm doing, or contracts being slow, or a- any of those things.
Madam Chair, I just, a point of order. We, we're not going to hash this out all day. We just need to, we understand what the motion was. We just, as a board, need to decide how we're moving forward. If moving forward is, we're getting obviously new legal counsel, and if the board doesn't do anything further and she stays, maybe that's, she addresses that another time. But I don't think now is, now is the time.
My, my preference would be, because this is, um, this was a bold move, and a brave one, and I applaud you for it. Um, and the, the, the board was surprised. And so, uh, and I'm pretty sure, um, Ms. Lynn was surprised. The motion is for her, she has a three-no vote of confidence. And she has to deal with that. And she has now heard that through second-hand, that perhaps Mr. Howard also doesn't have a vote of confidence in her. I would say that, but she's also heard that I'm, I was a little swing on that. Um, I would say the motion is passed. It's done. Let her regroup. Let her figure out, um, how she's going to address this. And if it is not addressed satisfactorily, then it's going to be a whole different motion that comes forward.
Okay.
That would be, just give everyone a chance to digest, would be my recommendation.
And then how are we moving forward, Madam Chair, with, uh, the first part of Commissioner Bayes' motion? Are we leaving that to Mr. Howard?
I, I think that that's pretty clear, that we're all going to be looking into this a lot further, okay? Including Mr. Howard. So, you know, you don't do these things overnight anyway, so.
Right, right.
Um, it's, uh, anyhow. Um, that's the way the motion was positioned. That's the way the vote was. So that would be my recommendation, as Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
This is word soup. It's absolutely clear as mud. I have to agree with Commissioner Finnegan. The, the motion is either asking her to resign or firing her. And not to bring up Commissioner Smith's words, or his motion at the time, but, uh, Commissioner Kitchen challenged him on it, and said, "If you're not happy, then make a motion to remove her." And he did. There was no second to it, so it died. But there needs to be, uh, it's not her to deal with it. I mean, we've, we've brought a lot of stuff up here. But this board either, you know, we're either asking her to resign or we're firing her. I, I think that, I think that needs to be, that needs to be clear, or we're just compounding the error up here.
Madam Chair.
Madam Attorney.
As your current legal advisor, I have to tell you that you have a contract with me. So you might want to look at that as you're making your decisions. And you may want to get counsel, since I can't counsel you on the ramifications of the contract, because I would be biased. But, because I'm always going to follow the law. I'll be happy to give each of you a copy of the contract, so you can review it.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, that would be good.
I am making my motion to terminate the, to, uh, the attorney Denise Lynn. That was my motion.
Second. Is that effective immediately? Or tomorrow, or? I do have vacation scheduled that I'm supposed to leave on for tomorrow, but.
Yes, effective immediately, because I think at this point, this is going to be toxic, no matter what we do. And it's, that's, it's unfortunate, but yes, I'm making my motion. It's been seconded, and it would be immediate.
I would like to know what the, um, ramifications are in the contract before I would entertain that, supporting that.
Well, it, it, it.
Have you, you, you're. Have you, 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 you do, you always do your homework. Did you not look at the contract as what the cost would be?
Contracts are always what they are. They work at the pleasure of the board. There's going to be termination clauses in there, they're going to get some type of severance package, and so it, they're pretty cut and dry, so. No, I have not looked at it, but it, I'm, again, I think there's solid ground here. I do not wish to embarrass her. I just am going to follow my motion. Hire outside to review the contract if you like. I don't know, but I, my motion is to terminate Ms. Lynn effective immediately.
Chair. Would Finnegan like to amend her motion to be effective immediately as well?
Second.
I'll amend my second.
Board, would anyone like to speak on this besides Commissioner Bayes?
Well, you got a motion and a second on the floor, so there needs to be public input. But I'm going to caution the board against making a decision when you have no earthly idea what the financial ramifications are. None. We don't know if this is going to cost us ten thousand dollars or if it's going to cost us three hundred thousand dollars. Not us, the taxpayers.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Finnegan, and then Commissioner Schlebo.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Bayes in saying that yes, there'll, there'll be a payout clause, and we're aware of that, although you're right, we don't have the dollar amount now, but the board has already made a motion to hire additional legal counsel. So, that's, that's additional money already. So, do you keep two on, or do you go ahead and bite the bullet? And I am worried about a toxic situation right now.
Commissioner Schlebo.
I would also caution the board when commissioners say that the administrator told them something that, to me, that isn't relative to what you're, relevant to what your motion is. And I just think this is just embarrassing.
As far as the word soup goes, the first part of the motion, I, that was a little harsh. The, um, the first part of that motion, however, was to move past, that felt a little squishy to me. But it was pretty clear what, the, the motion that I voted on included the asking her to resign. And that I came down on in favor of because I use the term shot across the bow a lot. I have a very long rope. But when I'm done, I'm done. I, um, prior to when I'm done, I always do a shot across the bow, and it's a strong one. Ask my two ex-husbands. And if you don't listen to me, then you get to the end of my rope, and when I'm done, I'm done. So that is why ultimately I, um, I supported it because it was asking her to resign. She's clearly not wanting to do that, but this is a pretty doggone big shot across the bow. So, um, I, I would like, I, I'm not going to support fire, terminating her altogether right at this moment, but I might very shortly. So, do you still want to go forward with the vote, or do you want to withdraw it?
I think I'm going to leave my motion standing.
My, and, and I'll, I'll tell you what my deciding factor is, is that I don't know the cost. That's my deciding factor. Yeah, I'm sorry, you can't address us from the audience. Not having the cost is, um, very difficult for me to, to just go on blind faith that it's going to be reasonable, so.
Commissioner.
Yes.
I just want to say one thing. We are also taxpayers up here too. Please remember that.
All right, um, public comment, would anyone like to speak on this? From the public?
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. I was always taught, don't cut off your nose to spite your face. That's exactly what you're trying to do. Okay? You don't know what the ramifications are financially if you were to end the contract immediately. You need to spend some time, look at it, maybe table it for, to the next meeting, so that everyone has a chance to see what. Or take a deep breath and say, you know, maybe we should, or, you know, that's really not a good idea at this point in time. Because trying to find a good attorney that knows what's going on and jump right in is not going to take twenty-four hours. And we have a lot of things, like Commissioner Bayes says, we have a lot of things going on right now with the county. Possibly looking for another attorney, getting another attorney, and then moving forward with a termination would be a better idea, such as your motion, which was to look for one and then ask her, and she said, "No, she's not going to." So you look for one. And then you find one. Then once you find that one, thank you very much for your service. It's something you have to bite the bullet, but like I said, you don't cut off your nose to spite your face, and that's what it looks like you're doing.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close that.
Madam Chair.
Any further board comment, Commissioner Finnegan?
Just for Commissioner Barick's edification, if she doesn't know, we do have other attorneys also that work for us.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion fails two-three. Okay. Ms. Stanton, upcoming meetings, and then we'll call a recess. Huh? Oh, you're not reading them anymore? Oh, never mind. Then we are recessed until five oh one.
Just where you can fill it out like that, because there was kind of a failed.
Is this your only copy though? I need to bring this meeting back to order, we can talk later.
Thank you. Sorry to call you out. It was with a smile. So, I wasn't mad, I was just like, dude, I'm sure everybody was waiting with bated breath. Okay, call us back to order, we got all five of us up here, yay. Um, you won. Final budget hearing. Ms. Dorrin.
The purpose of the final budget hearing is for the Board of County Commissioners to amend the adopted tentative budget as it sees fit, adopt a resolution stating the millage rates to be levied, and adopt a final budget. So, for A, discuss the percentage change in the millage rate over the rolled back rate. The current year aggregate rolled back rate is 8.3286. The current year proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8711. And the percent change in millage rate over the rolled back rate is 6.51%. B is take comments and questions from the general public concerning the tentative budget and proposed change in millage.
Madam Chair, may I ask you a question?
Uh huh.
Um, sometimes things just arrive when we get up. Is this from a county employee, do you know? Or is this from a citizen, Lake? I don't, I don't-
That was that lady from-
Oh, this was, this, okay. Thank you.
Good question, thank you. And this is a low, but this is still a lower proposed milli- aggregate millage rate than it was in 2324, correct? By a small amount?
It's slower than the one we had on September 11th.
Yes, but that one in itself was the same as the current, the year we're in right now, 2324.
Right, the aggregate millage rate.
It went down the equivalent of the 75,000, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, um, so I'm opening it to the public at this point, yes?
Do we talk first, or no?
Would anyone like to speak for or against this item? Going once, going twice, will close public comment? Looking, you want me to take over? C, yes?
So, C is accept the motion to approve a resolution amending the 2425 budget for adjustments previously presented at the September 11th, 2024 tentative budget hearing. Exhibit A, other budget modifications, exhibit B, and cash carry forward estimates for certain accounts, exhibit C. Page, um, three.
Madam Chair, may I just ask a point of order, please?
Yes.
So, public comment, and I had said, do we say something first, but under A, it looks like this is when we're supposed to discuss the percentage change in the millage rate, which I would like to discuss, and then take public comment, and then motion. I, I would just like a chance to discuss this before a motion's made.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
Okay. Board, respectfully, I'm not gonna vote to keep the millage the same. I understand why you did it. We were all concerned. Taxes were raised last year. So, we said that we would keep the millage the same, and that was preliminary budget hearing. So, I, I went on with that. There, there has been just a minor, minor change, and I think that we could do better. And I wanna just throw some things out to you, and I've actually made some handouts. I really took a hard look at this last night, and I typed these up, so I hope that you don't mind to give it some attention. I have three options, um, for you. I'm gonna pass out the first one with an explanation. I'm sure the clerk will want one also. I might have an extra one for Erin. I gave you the one that looks like this, right?
Uh, yes.
It was just one page, yes?
Yes, so then I have another page I'll, I'll give to you in a moment. Um, is there any extras of this? I'll give one to Maricel, too. Thank you. So, in our current budget that we're in, budget 2324, we had put into reserves 16,735,524 dollars. But, good for us, um, we actually, there was additional money that was put into reserves that was not spent, and it was around $5 million. So, the actual number that we have in reserves right now for this budget year that we're in, 21,755,948 dollars. This year, we're, we're actually budgeting over 9.4 million dollars more than the current budget. And keeping the millage the same equates to us over a six and a half increase in taxes to, to homeowners. So, if you look at this first budget, the one that I'm giving you now, my first proposal, it's 120.7 million, roughly. So, I took out the unspent reserves to see how much money we actually needed to spend on doing county business, and it came to just over 99 million dollars. So, we've asked all of our constitutional officers, usually it's 3%, sometimes 5%, so I was generous, and I added 5% increase to what we actually spent. And it was 4.9 million, just shy of 5 million dollars. And then I added that, so predicting that would be the total money we would need to do county business that affects to the, the millage rate, anyway. Then I added the 17%, the full amount of reserves that we could add, and I came up with a proposed budget of, for 2425, of 121.7 million dollars. I think that we should be able to do it. Now, I know when you say keep the millage the same, that's exactly what staff's going to do, and I think that, um, really gave some departments a windfall, and I don't know that after last year's tax increase, we need to do that to the taxpayers. That is my first, um, proposed budget, and I would actually be willing to make a motion for that budget. Of course, I wanna get your feedback, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a second handout.
Madam Chairman.
She still has the floor, unless it's a point of order.
Thank you. So, this is a little more detailed. This takes our current 2324 budget, shows you what we have on the far left. On the far right is what, keeping the millage the same, the current proposed. In between, just for everybody, I, in the top portion, I showed you, um, what it would be with a 3% and a 5% increase. At the bottom, I gave you the amount of increase. So, how much money would each fund actually get extra with these three proposals, a blanket 3%, a blanket 5%, and the current proposed? You can see that some, some is great. So, I do think that the first one I gave to you would work. And I think that we could reduce the millage to accommodate that. Now, remember, we don't have to reduce the millage blanketly across. I know from all of our citizens, transportation has been a very important line item. So, maybe we would decide to keep the millage the same for transportation. And some of these other funds, the General Fund, the Health Department, Library Services, possibly Fire Rescue, we could do those at different proposed millage rates. We just learned people that, um, love attending our libraries, or maybe some people that have issues with it. I think everybody was shocked that, um, 1,300 pieces of material are ordered monthly. So, you know, I, I'm not sure that they need another 421,000 in this budget. That's extra taxpayer money, maybe a smaller amount, you know, employee raises, some things like that. So, I don't know that every department needs the windfall that they're getting just because we said, keep the millage the same. We can definitely do county business on the 121.7 million, but I figured I would get a lot of questions, um, and maybe some feedback. But, as I sit today, I would rather do the lowest amount. I gave you another option of 121, or 124.4, 126.8, but I absolutely will stand firm and not vote for the 132 that has been proposed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schleber.
I wanna know exactly which departments are getting a windfall, and I'm very, I really wanna know that.
Well, maybe departments was not the right word, but if you look at the amount of increase, you can see, I've spelled it out for you clearly, at, at 3%, this is how much, General Fund. At 3%, it's over 2.8 million. At 5%, it's over 4.7 million. The current proposed, just for the General Fund, is 9.3 million over that amount. So, you can look at the bottom of the page and see these extra amounts that would be given. On the first proposal, um, that's not broken down, that's just where it seems reasonable that the county could fund all of these things on that budget when you look at what we've just spent.
Well, I, I can read this, I understand it. I just, you said it twice, that different departments would have a windfall, and I, I wanna know who that is, you know, what departments that is, because that's where we need to start then, and see who's got a windfall of money. Which one of y'all has windfall money?
If I may? Um, I think windfall might be a, not the best choice of words.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I clarified, maybe not the departments, but, um, when there's plenty of money, it will be filled. Government is a deep black hole. You can fund it, and fund it, and fund it, and it's never enough, because we could still have better buildings, better programs, better anything, but, uh, taxpayers have felt the burn, and I know that we could do a little better this year, and I put this work in, thank you. I put this work in because I came here tonight to work, not to do what's easy. Easy is keep the millage the same, fill the budget up, let's all go home. But, that's not easy for all of these people, and the people that are watching, it's not easy. I'm, I'm, I'm here to work, and the side comments, I mean, I'm gonna get that probably for the next month, and that, that's okay, but it, I'm trying. I'm trying to do something on behalf of the people that have elected me to sit here and try to keep their taxes low and still run an efficient government.
I didn't give a side comment, I asked a real question. I wanna know what departments have the wind feel- fall. And I am not opposed to lowering the millage, but I really wanna know, and I've asked this all along, where is the money, just as in the sheriff's budget? There, where, how much is payroll? I want to know that answer. So, please stop your side comments.
Okay, enough.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Didn't, yes?
Erin, can you please walk us through? So, the, the fiscal year 25 anticipated taxes are 132, is it 601,385, or is it 132,686, 606?
So, I have the budget book, I don't know if we have the- It's the 601.
Okay. So, my question then, on that number, is that the number that we have our administrative regulation for 17% of reserves?
So, there is a going, can you hear me? So, there is going to be additional in the reserve until, or if, that funding is moved to the sheriff's budget. So, right now, um, the reserve would be at 19.23%. And then, once, and if the funding, as discussed from September 11th, was then moved to the sheriff's office, the reserves would go down to 16.81%.
Okay, so the, I'm just, I wanna walk through this step by step so that I understand, so bear with me. So, is that the, the 10 positions in the 3.5%, the 2,704,067? That's what is in the reserve category?
That is correct.
That makes it 19%?
Yes, 19.
19.32, to be exact.
19.23.
23, okay. Then, um, so, we had additional revenue this year of 8.1 million, 9,676. And, we have park projects of 537,000, constitutional renovations, and who, who's doing those renovations? And what's that for? The 838,000?
830, so currently, there are several renovations, um, for the supervisor of elections. There's some for, um, the sheriff, um, and that includes a new evidence garage, some window replacements. We have 2.9 million set aside for judicial renovations. We have 500,000 for a generator, generator replacement at the resource center, and then 781,250 dollars for HVAC replacements at the jail and the courthouse. So, these are in our CIP, so these should all be projects that the county themselves are doing.
And then, the total amount overall, between 10 positions and 3.5% for the sheriff, is the 2.7 million, a little over?
Yes.
And then constitutional officers increases are 492,181?
Correct.
And then, our additional funding for road resurfacing is 2,585,808?
That's correct.
And then we have grant match dollars?
Yes, um, both for, um, grants that present, um, that we are not aware of yet, and the 2 million dollars that we have set aside for the HMGP fire station grant match. So, that is a grant, uh, that came to the board a few months ago, that, uh, the county has applied for, and that's when we asked, um, that there is a match, a 25% match to get that grant.
So, 25% of that match is 2 million, roughly?
Yes.
And then we're putting a million in reserves for grants that, so that we can apply for them and be awarded them because of they'll take a match?
That's correct, and I can tell you just, um, in the last- And I can tell you, just in the last few weeks, we've been made aware of one that could potentially lead to some additional road resurfacing.
So that's how we're getting to the, we're taking advantage of the tax increase dollars by that amount? The only thing I'm a little bit confused about is you said the reserves have the money in it, but we've got the sheriff's positions in that line item. So is it in reserves or is it in this 8 million?
No, this is just a listing of additional expenses. So where it's located, I didn't specify. It's just, this is where some of those funds are being spent. So right now, it's being held in reserve.
That's what, that's my point. So if I do, on this sheet that I have, that I asked for, that, those 10 positions is, when I itemize those out, is that the 8 million? Or is that 2.7 million for the sheriff, is that in the reserve category?
So the 8 million is just the increased revenue that we got from the millage. These are all things that are part of, or could be considered, new expenses that we wouldn't have otherwise been able, you know, to fund. So it's not that it's counted twice. It's just, it's on this list as one-time expenses, new expenses that the board chose to cover.
Okay, I'm going to do a little math, so move on to somebody else. Thank you.
I'm going to stake, I'm going to make a general statement that I agree with Commissioner Finnegan's statement that government can be a black hole. And fortunately, this county is very conservative. And I find that most of the staff are very conservative and they want what's best for the county. Unfortunately, if you look at what our road situation is, we are now up to 16 million a year in road resurfacing, up from, I don't know, 2, 3 million a year. We were paving at 80 to 100 dollars a year. And I do have a point with this while she does her math. We are paving at 80 to 100 year cycle. What has happened is an absolute tsunami of crumbling roads that all hit at the same time. 50% of our mileage in our county now have to be rebuilt. Not only has there been pretty dramatic inflation from, I always say, to be fiscally conservative, you take care of the assets you have or you get rid of them, okay? You own a building, you don't need any more, you get rid of it. Otherwise, you keep it roofed. Otherwise, you're going to lose the asset. The only time it's okay, to use a personal example, an individual's example, the only time it's okay to delay replacing a roof is if your income has precipitously tanked. You got laid off, okay? It's kind of what happened to the county when Florida Power closed the Nuke Plant. We had a precipitous drop in income. So for a short period of time, until we recovered from that and the housing bust, it would be okay to delay maintenance. The other time that would be okay to delay maintenance is when the inflation has gone sky, temporarily sky high, as we saw with COVID. Other than that, you got to take care of business from year to year to year. So I am very pleased that we now are putting 16 million a year into roads. But that lack of planning ahead and, quite frankly, adulting for the county has been in this culture for a very long time, for decades. We have a lot of things that we have not planned for and that we need to find the money for. And so I, speaking personally, and I think several of the commissioners up here feel the same way, is that we are trying to move into a more forward-thinking, proactive board. Because guess what? Let's go back to the road example. $425 a year is the annual increased maintenance on your vehicle for driving on poor roads. State of Florida, okay? That's a state of Florida number. The average increase to homesteaded homeowner last year for an average property value, which, by the way, I am a taxpayer, as Commissioner Schleber pointed out, we all are. My house happens to be valued pretty much dead even with the average for the county. It's like $270,000 valuation. The average, that average homesteaded home saw an increase of $90 a year versus $451 for your car maintenance for the average person. I know personally someone in Pine Ridge, the same one that was the rollerblader, that was upset that his road still hasn't been paved. He said they had to buy new engine mounts for his wife's car twice, thousands of dollars because of driving on Pine Ridge roads. So we are making, make no mistake, every single one of us up here is a fiscally conservative Republican. And to my mind, fiscal conservatism means paying as little as possible for the value that you get. And there is absolutely no doubt that thinking ahead and looking at these things from a more adulting perspective is beneficial to all of our pocketbooks. We are in a period of deep, rapid change, and it's rather scary and difficult. And yes, our residents are hurting. We all are. Fortunately, inflation is coming down now and so forth. But there is no doubt that we need to take a sharp pencil to this. I do believe that staff has done that. That being said, if there's, you know, I don't think there's any windfall going on. I think that our department heads have delayed adding staff. They have delayed putting aside money for roofs, for all those other things that has to happen as a, as basically we go forward. And I had another thought, just ran away, it'll come back. Commissioner Baze, are you ready now? Yeah, hopefully it'll come to me.
Do you have it or you want me to move on?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I think all your words were, was a great reason why, when we hopefully lower this millage, that we keep transportation at the same millage rate. But all of these other line items for millage does not equate to our crumbling roads. But transportation absolutely does. General fund, like I said, yes, of course, the more money, the better everything. But this year, I think, I think we could do better. I think they were, they were told and just filled up the budget. And like I said, I started this by saying, we had a hefty budget this year and $5 million extra went back into reserves. We had a $5 million surplus over the 16 million. So altogether, 21.7 million dollars is going to be pushed through to the new budget, which is great, that's a good starting point. But we're asking taxpayers for money and we took another 5 million and put it away. I think we could do a little better.
I remembered my point. And to, I want to make sure that I draw the line between my going down the road, literally, to talk about the crumbling roads. All of our departments have been really working on cheaping, making things as cheap as possible. And they're not, my belief, my very strong belief, is that we're going to end up can, always continually paying more for things because we are not looking ahead. When you are looking ahead, you can also delay things when there's inflation because you've planned for it. You can buy when things are less inflated or with special deals or with grants. I love that Commissioner Baze has us putting aside money for grant, you know, that was her request. And I applaud that for grant matching. And to put it in perspective too, I look at, Florida Tax Watch says that we're doing awfully doggone good as a county for taxes in a low-tax state. Already a low-tax state, and we're doing so well that even with the current tax structure that we voted in last year, we were just named the fifth-best place for the second year running to retire in Florida due to low taxes, quality healthcare, and social opportunities. We now, and everybody needs to take a moment to absorb this, okay? When you get more traffic at a store, for example, what does the store owner do? They have to hire more employees. We have 17% more population now than in 2008. We have 10% fewer employees. If you don't think these guys aren't working their tails off, we've pretty much read it out, all the lazy ones. Pretty sure, there might be a few more. But Steve Howard has really done a good job at doing that. This team wants to do well. So, and this is a very difficult thing for me to say because, yes, hopefully, we could find other places. And I would, I would love to see the millage go down. But I need to hear specific examples of what you would like to cut, having gone down the line items, on what would you like to cut? Because otherwise, I'm not going to vote against, the budget's already been prepared. And the second meeting is when we're supposed to make any major changes, not the third. Because she's got to file it with the state by the end of the month, which is six days away.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Respectfully, I never think that it's too late to, you know, for new information. And again, I would hold fast in keeping transportation the same. But in essence, we tell our constitutional officers to function a raise between 3 and 5%. But we're saying our general fund and the health department and the library and fire, they all get 10% or more in the budget year. And that, that's my whole, whole point. And yes, the budgets have been made, but there was $5 million extra. So I'm sure if, as a board, we came back and said, "We're going to shave this off," a new budget would be made. And yes, there's always, always going to be projects put ahead. But to that point, we're already at, and I didn't do that, I'm, I'm rough-looking at maybe 10% that this is higher, of course. And if we raised it 20%, we would do even more projects now and not when it's more expensive. But we can't put that burden on our taxpayers. So I'm just asking us to be fiscally responsible as a board and not take more than the 5% that we ask other people not to take. And like I said, I'm still pretty good keeping transportation at the same millage rate. But I think each other category, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a huge loss from this budget. But, I mean, you can see what the increases are. I gave you the increases, so that kind of spells it out.
And as far as reserves goes, Commissioner Baze made a, had what she terms a rant a few meetings ago about if we get a Mexico Beach situation, we have a catastrophic storm inbound tomorrow. We need the reserves. We absolutely need the reserves because we can only run for 60 days right now. And that's fine with the 60 days. But what happens if all the valuation is wiped out and we have to help our residents and so forth? So reserves, I'm going to go with what staff recommends on that. But I'm still waiting. If you have any specific places that you would like to cut, I'm all ears.
Well, well, so we want me to rewrite the entire budget and not our department team? And I did, especially in the first one, I spelled it out. The top that we're allowed to say in reserves, 17%, I agree. I've heard that, this is important to the board. That's why I thought, well, we need to make sure we have the 17%. No, no one's chiming in. It looks like everyone's busy doing other things. So I said my piece, that's, I said my piece.
Commissioner Baze, have you figured out your math that you were doing?
I can't, I, I'm still a little bit confused by where we're at. So if we have anticipated taxes of 132 million, 601, that's an increase of 8,109,676.
That's correct. If we had looked, compared to the rollback rate. So that was the new, the new revenue.
Be specific. And where I'm having the difficulty in deciphering is the reserves at 19.23% that you said the additional revenues are, for the sheriff are in that reserve number. And how much is that?
So the total that's in reserve, that's in reserve right now, including the sheriff, is 25 million, 64,615 dollars.
25 million, say it again.
64,615 dollars.
Okay. And how much of that is for the sheriff?
2,000, or I'm sorry, 2,704,67 dollars.
Okay. So to Commissioner Finnegan's point, is the, the road resurfacing, the 2,585,808 that we're putting, is that coming out of the general fund?
No, there is no road resurfacing funding coming out of the general fund this year.
So what is the 2,585,808 for road resurfacing? Where's that coming from?
I believe that is extra transportation from that point. There we did 0.2 tenths of a mil, 0.2 tenths of a mil for two years. So 0.4 tenths of a mil from transportation. And that's the increase in that from year to year.
Is that going to keep us on track then with what we've been doing on transportation research funding?
So there was a conversation with Carl. And I know he previously came up and kind of discussed that. My understanding is it changes year to year. They're hoping that that new LIDAR project they're going to do will give us more information as to what roads need what. And then they can come up with a better cost to stay on track. So the number we have for this year is just for this year only. I don't know what they're going to need in the future to stay on that 20, 25-year cycle.
So I'm going to call on my fellow commissioners here that sit on the MPO. And I had, I asked some questions about, I mean, I know we have road resurfacing, but we also have issues regarding capacity, which are not in our work program. We actually just heard a last board meeting where we turned down a development, but on Cardinal. That's not even in the work program for probably 20 years. And the fact of the matter is, on our MPO, most of the money that the state is going to look at giving is going to go back to Hernando County. It's not coming to Citrus because we've gotten the money for 41 and we've gotten the Suncoast Parkway. But in our capacity needs, we have, I just asked for kind of a generic list to, to give me an idea. 491 from Pine Ridge to State Road 200, and these are in today's dollars, would be 170 million. Cardinal Street, US 19 to 491 would be 188 million. Rock Crusher, 490 to 44, 121 million. Venable Crystal Oaks from 19 to 44, 133 million. I'm not sure why Croft is on there from 44 to 486, it's 83 million. Grover Cleveland Boulevard, 19 to 491 is 153 million. And 490 from US 19 to 44 is 188 million. Those are capacity. And we haven't even began to put this into our comp plan. We haven't talked about setting this aside, it doesn't mean condemnation. I, I mean, we've got some real challenges ahead of us. So in addition to all of the road resurfacing, and then we kind of know what we have for SCOP, we're probably leaning into that edge where we could potentially lose that funding. And then as far as trip funding, we're, we're not going to get any. So it's, we're setting at an apex with transportation that we're going to have some real challenges ahead of us. I'm concerned if, and I get it, but we also know what happened on four ninety-one. Not doing that project, the escalation cost probably cost us a third more than what it should have cost us if we would have kept the project moving on time in conjunction with where it was at. So I, as, as the two people on the MPO, I mean, I'd love to hear your thoughts about transportation and keeping money so that we're, we're not taking our foot off the gas because it's not ever going to get any cheaper. What, what are your thoughts about where we go? What we do? How, how do we, how do we take care of our constituents, be cognizant of their, their, their budgets at home, but also know that we've been charged with the responsibility to deliver these services?
Are you addressing me?
No, I was asking, the two MPO people.
Make sure it can hard.
County's broke when it comes to increasing capacity on our roads. We add what little bit we can. We're thankfully just starting to make some progress in road resurfacing, road, the, the road repair work, but we have, we have no dollars or very few dollars to move forward with any capacity projects that, that we need to take care of. And I don't, from what I, from what I have heard, I don't, I don't see that there's any talk of reducing our reserves, nor should there be. What I have heard is that keeping, keeping our reserves as they're proposed, but adding to that the amount of money for the ten additional deputies, which I, I think is wise. Now, certainly the sheriff's budget, as we talked about the last meeting, I, I think should be, should be increased by what the other constitutionals are getting, but with the west side of the county potentially facing catastrophic flooding like this county has never seen, the reserves should absolutely be off the table. So Commissioner Finnegan, I hear what you're saying, but I haven't yet heard where, where we should cut, what, you know? I'm not suggesting to rewrite the whole budget, but I don't, I don't know whose budget you want to cut.
Well, just like we would say to any of the other constitutionals, I would say, go back and, you know, everybody cut their budget by five percent, like a small percentage. Everybody's getting extra money, obviously, from the general fund. Library, I mean, that's just one that sticks out because it's his own. Proposed budget will be getting an extra four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. I mean, could they not function on an extra two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars?
I don't know.
Well, that's what, people have to make the tough decisions and we're, we're not doing that. So at some point, this board has to say, like we tell our constitutionals, they've wanted lots of other things, and we've said at times, and not just this board, past boards, I'm sorry, this is the percentage, you stay within that percentage, you figure it out. We need to do that, too.
That's guidance we should have given then months ago, not at the, not at the eleventh hour. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that to the constitutionals and I wouldn't do that to the staff.
Commissioner Schleber.
Staff has worked very hard on this and obviously, if you look at the past and see, I think Commissioner Bayes has brought it up many times, that we're still not at the level of when you went through the Great Recession. Are we talking, we're talking about six million dollars? Is that what we're, the bottom line? Eight million dollars? I understand wanting to roll back, but we're in the position we're in. Citrus Springs is in the position they're in, so is Pine Ridge, from rollbacks. And if you talk to citizens and they want, they're, they want things done, they just don't want the excess. So we've got a, you all have a lot coming down the pipe, and I think four ninety-one is one of the biggest things we need to address. And if you don't start chipping away at that, putting money away, what little, what little bit you have, and in the grand scheme of things of a four hundred and...
Seventy-five.
Thank you.
Or thereabouts.
Eight million, if you want to, I mean, I think it, rolling back to get down to six million, does that really make that big a difference if it holds us up with getting things done? People are talking about our infrastructure. We have been found, we are being inundated by people wanting water and, you know, be able to flush your toilets and get those pipes and get the river cleaned and all that. I just think that, that the staff has worked very hard, and this is the eleventh hour, and I don't have time to go and check these numbers. I know what the staff has given me, so I just, I, I, I can't agree with this unless you tell me exactly where you want to cut.
Commissioner Bayes.
I, I, I do, I, you know, my first blush when I saw the grant match, I was like, whoa. But, and I'm assuming that two million dollars for that grant match for the fire station, that's Inverness, correct?
No, that's the Home Assas Fire Station that they're raising through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through FEMA. So there were funds that were allocated to Citrus County after Adalia, and that was one of the three projects that the county submitted for.
So that's coming out of general fund?
Yeah, so when we came, fire obviously does not have two million dollars to match that grant. So in order to go forward, we had discussed putting match aside, you know, to do that.
I know there's a grant coming forward also for Inverness Fire Station. And I want to use that as a, as an example because when we ran the numbers, that is actually a return. I mean, I know it's, you're getting, I don't know, fifty percent of the money free to build that fire station, at minimum, I believe. And on top of that, because where the current fire station is located, it's outside the boundary lines for ISO ratings, which affects all of the, the insurance ratings through Inverness out by the Country Club. Either they're nines or tens, meaning it's very difficult to find a policy, and if you do find a policy, they're very expensive. So have it, getting that fire station and getting it built at the Inverness air, airport, you'll actually see a redu- reduction in, in your insurance premiums and better quality, probably product for your home. So it's things like that why I think these grant matches are very important, that we, it's something we've never done, we've never put money away. We put money away so that we can basically get fifty percent money given to us. I, you know, again, I think we're kind of at the, the last hour of this, and if we were going to do this, this is something we probably should have done earlier. I mean, it, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough place to be, but we're paying the price for things that we've done for years and years of not doing.
Prior boards completely bankrupted our infrastructure and we're paying the price now. And again, those roads being rebuilt cost us four times. Let's not even talk about the inflation that's happened since when they should have been done. A full-depth reclamation costs four times as much as paving on time. I think, sir, you were, and you're not allowed to say anything back, but I think you were applauding the cutting taxes. You should be mad about that, that it's costing us as taxpayers four times more because of poor planning. And I have seen evidence of that kind of thinking throughout county government. So, you know, if there is a specific thing on the table that we want to cut, then I'm, I'm always open to that because I'm a taxpayer, too. I don't like paying taxes either, but what really galls me is wasting my tax dollars. Waste kills me. Get every drop of value out of every penny I pay, please. And paving things on time, keeping up with infrastructure, and that includes our individual departments. Commissioner Bayes brought up a very good point. You know, this, there's a lot of complexity to an economy, you know, a personal economy. I mentioned the four hundred and twenty-five dollars in increased vehicle maintenance for driving on poor roads. Know anything about that, Colonel? Yeah? She's talking about homeowner's insurance. Homeowner's insurance matters a lot how close your fire station is, what class of insurance you get. And so by us paying attention to things like that, we are looking out for our residents. So. Yes, Commissioner Finnegan.
I can see which way this is going and that, that's okay, but I just want to clarify that nothing that I have brought forward would even suggest to bankrupt the community, and I'm sure, I'm hoping you didn't mean that in, in my direction. And I'm going to say it one more time because when we say that we hate government waste, five million dollars extra, five million dollars extra. So I can't put it upon myself when I've just learned about this, and it, it's been quite difficult to get information that, that I needed to, to put things together. But yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, it's going to bankrupt any department if we would ask them to shave off a few percent. We're obviously saying that all of these millages need over a, a ten percent bump. I, I just don't agree with, with that. And the millage is not based off of our four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar budget. Last year was based off a hundred and twenty point seven million dollar budget. So eight million adds up. It, that, the taxpayers are, are paying that. So they overpaid and I was just trying to help them along to not overpay again.
Why do you say they overpaid?
Because we had a budgeted amount to keep in reserves of over sixteen million. As we spent, we didn't spend in our general fund an extra five million dollars. So that has raised our reserves to twenty-one point seven million dollars, which will all get flushed back in this budget. And even with that extra, we're still asking for a major increase. That's why I was trying to break this down as much as, as much as I could. So what I would like, and you know, this is my second budget, the first one, we came in, it was like, you know, first year, this year, I realized I needed to tackle this more. But here's what this board says all the time, especially even after the last one. We're keeping the millage rate the same, you all don't worry because we can't raise it up, but we can reduce it from here. But that's not true. No, I just heard that over and over. Now it's too late, you, you can't reduce it, which I thought by hearing everybody say that, that's why I put all this work into it, because I heard you all say we could. So I'm like, wow, let me take another stab. I'm getting information, getting information. So I just want to know, tell you all that's why I did this and, and where I'm coming from.
You would certainly get a much warmer reception from me had it been the second hearing because, and I'm sorry if that wasn't clear to you, but the third budget hearing is a formalization basically of the second with only small tweaks. The major drop has to happen between the first and the second for us to stay on track. Commissioner Kennard.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at reductions if it weren't just at this point, at the eleventh hour going, you know, you're getting, in the current budget, you're getting this much increase, we want you to cut that by three or five percent. If we do something like that in the first or second meeting, then staff can come back and say, let, if it's individually or up here as a group and come back and say, here's why we're doing this. We've got, you know, servers that are outdated that need to be replaced, or, you know, we put in there that we, that we're going to add two new people, but we can reduce that to one other person. Then there's some back and forth, but just a blanket cut by a percentage, and I do appreciate the work that, that went into it, but I think it's too late in, too late in the discussions just to do a blanket, all right, you're getting, everybody's getting five percent less than what was proposed. I, I don't think that that is, that that is responsible. And, you know, again, I know you, you suggested keeping the transportation the same. My concern is, is staying behind, staying behind the eight ball in too many, too many departments. I'd rather have these, these discussions and, if, if not guidance in our first, prior to our first budget meeting. When we have, you know, when Aaron comes to us and starts laying it out there and says, how do you guys want us to lay this budget out? I feel like that's the time to say, you know, let's, let's do zero-based budgeting. Let's see where we started at last year and, you know, what we're looking at as far as increases go. Then I think we can, we can make some real progress at reducing the millage rate, but, you know, I'm belaboring the point and, you know, honestly, at this point, not to sound too forward, Madam Chair, but I think you've got your direction to start moving forward. Let's hear what the public has to say.
Yes, sir, I agree. And I will say that I, I will just add one further thing is that I do think that we need to rework how taxes are done. I think the millage rate does need to come down substantially, but we have to get those fees in a different way, but it would be more transparent, more you get, you see what you're getting when you get it, instead of this amorphous property tax that magically appears every year and you're not quite sure what's going to what. Anything further before I move to open to the public? Okay. Do open to the public again if anybody would like to speak on this item. Please state your name and address for the record and fill out a green card after you, after you speak is fine. And you get, and you get three, and you get three minutes.
Name's Alan Otis, O-T-I-S, with the elevator. And I live on five five six six South Parade Terrace in Inverness. And I really like the way our...
New elected county commissioners are thinking for the people. I appreciate the way you're thinking, trying and working very hard to try to figure out a way to save the taxpayers some money here. And we talk about our county commissioners being forward-thinking. Well, these county commissioners that want to be forward-thinking have been on this county commission for quite some time, so the mistakes that have been made have been made by you folks. Because I came here eight years ago and up until the last two years, this county has grown exponentially. Businesses have come in, we've had great times as far as growth. And over the last twenty-four months, we've seen the inflation, we've seen property assessed values that are high are actually probably about five to ten thousand dollars, if not more, lower. My wife's a realtor and the property values that we've assessed everybody at are really not as good as it used to be, in a sense of a lot of, a lot of money that you think these properties are worth, they're worth less. But anyway, being said, I, I got thrown off track because of a lot of what... But anyway, being said, I, I got thrown off track because of a lot of what I'm hearing. We've got two county commissioners that are working hard at the taxpayers. And then we've got three county commissioners here saying, we're in the final hour and we're not going to really listen. Well, I read the paper, and they said on the 24th was our last opportunity to come here and try to lower the mill rate. You've received millions and millions in dollars of our money, your money too, of course, your taxpayers. And you're working very little, make a very little effort to try to cross the Ts and dot the Is to lower the tax mill rate. The revenue has come in, we've got businesses coming in. Why don't we take a look at the roads and say, okay, instead of charging the property owners more and more in their tax bill? Because I've been here eight years, and every single year I've been here, my property taxes have gone up. So none of you have lowered the taxes. You may not have raised the mill rate, but the taxes are more every single year. We do have a problem with the roads. I don't know what you've done with all the money three years ago, five years ago, when money was easy. Do you know more than half of this county? 55% in a recent survey said everyone in this county, 50, over 50%, are struggling to pay their bills. Inflation, insurance, everything, and you don't want to lower the taxes for one year? I have a feeling that we may see gas prices come down quite a bit. Add some money to the gas tax. You want to fix the roads, put it in the gas tax, because I guarantee you, gas ta, gas prices are going to come down probably 25 to 50 cents a gallon. If you put 10 cents into the gas tax, we could gain revenue that way. But not people that are struggling to pay their bills, the property taxes are too high. They need to come down. You need to at least make the effort with all the extra money that you've got.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I got aggravated, but some of what I heard is
Yeah, we're preempted by the state on what we can charge on gas taxes, correct? So there's, we're charging as, as much as we can on gas tax. And as far as where all the money has gone, it's gone to 1,900 miles of roads. And it was underfunded for many, 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 many years.
Janet Barak, Citrus Springs. Okay, I sit here and I listen, and Aaron says that the state, the maximum state can do is, that we could charge is 16.81% for reserve. Right? But you, but you can't answer me. But, because I know that. But the thing is, she says, I think it's going to be 19.23. It's amazing how the maximum we can have is so much, we're going to be so much more. So I, I didn't understand that, the way she explained it, but that's, I tried writing it down, but anyhow.
Pause the timer. Hang on.
The maximum is 17%. And what she said is, right now, we're at 19.23% because we sat aside $2,704,67 for the sheriff. That money is sitting in the reserve account for the sheriff.
Okay, but that's, you know, when you're sitting out there, I'm telling you, that's not how it sounded, what it said, you know.
It doesn't sound that way up here either, Janet.
Okay, so anyhow, we're sitting with probably $5 million coming back that didn't get spent. Why can't you earmark it 491 expansion for Lane? And we start doing a 491 expansion program of a mile at a time like we did. So you go from, you know, Pine Ridge to, say, West Hampshire. And you get the money for that. And then you take the next, and you go down to Pharaoh's Funeral Home. And you take the next. If we're going to keep the 5 million, it needs to be earmarked, not just put back into general fund. And if we want to do it for transportation, earmark it for transportation for future expansion. That's the only thing I had to say, because I know you're going to pass it.
Are you speaking on behalf of Pine Ridge?
No, this will be my individual comment.
Okay.
Mark Savaski, I live on North Wagon Point. One of the things that, that I've noticed in, in this particular session is how much it resembles the same meeting last year and the year before. And I think Commissioner Kennard made a, a great point that, yes, we're in the 11th hour, but we shouldn't be. I've watched this board repeat the same process three years in a row now. This is my third budget that I've, I've
God bless you.
That I've walked through with you. And, and, and we keep doing the same thing. So kind of a lesson learned from the roads. Similar thing. What guidance are you giving the staff? What guidance are you giving the, what direction are you giving to the departments? So something more than, let's not do this again next year, only to watch us do it again next year. So you probably need to pass something, whether it's a motion or whether it's guidance. I don't know how it works up there, but I know a motion will work. That you will direct for next year's budget. You will direct the departments to do, whether it's zero-based or some other process, I don't know. But the same conversation over and over again. And we end up at the 11th hour with people with great intentions, but not enough time to execute and think through that. From a tax-paying perspective, from just a regular citizen, it's disappointing that I've watched the same process three years in a row now. The board does a lot of good things. Every one of you commissioners are trying to do the right thing. Here is somewhere that I think you could really leverage the effort by providing that definitive guidance, whether it's a motion or ever how you energize the staff to do that. Too late to do it now, I understand that because of the time constraints on Aaron to get the budget to the state. At the same time, you cannot allow that to be repeated again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and I just wanted to thank, three, three minutes, yeah, I'll just take three minutes. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Diana Finnegan for doing her due diligence and going through the budget and trying to make the change to reduce the amount that we're spending. Because we are spending, we are going to be spending more as taxpayers, because the amount of keeping it the same is, is still 6. whatever percent above the, the rollback rate. So actually, last, at the last session, the last session, there were over half a dozen of us, I can't remember how many, who cited a specific portion of the budget that doesn't affect roads, doesn't affect anything of the essentials. That was basically, the library has this 10% increase. Now, I know some of that is in new construction and stuff, but $312,000 of that is in purchasing 1,300 books a month for the library. And we already know that that was a problem, you know, just a number of years ago, where a pornographic book ended up in the shelves. Nobody knew about it because they don't have time to read all those books. But nobody said anything. You know, that was a specific thing. That was the last budget meeting. Nobody said, well, other than Commissioner Finnegan made, made a comment about that. But none of the rest of you said anything about that. So you had the opportunity then to say, okay, we'll take that 312,000, we're going to reduce it. But you didn't. So don't say, well, it's too late, you know. Now you're, now you're saying you want to make changes, you want to make the cuts. But there was a specific item that was brought up just the la, the last budget hearing, the first budget hearing, that said, look at this number, the 312,000, it's been an issue. We know it's been an actual issue with the county spending that kind of money on a whole bunch of books, some of which may be pornographic. And, and the staff doesn't have the capacity to, to vet those. So there is one item, you know, we'd like to, you to see if you can cut at least that. Anyway, 10% increase in the library budget seems quite high. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice, closed public comment?
So C, accept a motion to approve a resolution amending the 2425 budget for adjustments previously presented at the September 11th, 2024 tentative budget hearing. Exhibit A, other budget modifications, exhibit B, and cash carry forward estimates for certain accounts, exhibit C.
Board?
Madam Chair, I will make that motion to approve the resolution amending the 2425 budget for adjustments previously presented at the September 11th, 2024 tentative budget hearing. Other budget modifications and cash carry forward estimates for certain accounts.
Adjustments, yeah.
Chair?
Yes.
Is that assessments?
It says adjustments on one of my pages.
I'm sorry, it should be adjustments.
Cash carry forward adjustments, and it noted exhibit A, B, and C.
Correct.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kennard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schleball. Any further board discussion?
Yeah, if we cut $312,000 from the library, how much is that per home? Because it just seems like that gentleman just wants to target the library. And how much is $312,000? How much, how much of a tax break am I going to get if we, if we didn't buy another book for the library for Citrus County?
I don't know offhand, but I can't imagine it would be very much.
A penny?
It's probably couch change or less. The, and some people need that. I'm not making light of it. A big portion of that is multiple copies of bestsellers for adults. And I will tell you, as often as I've tried to use Libby to reduce my addiction to books, a lot of times they don't have the book I want to borrow. So I don't know that we're actually going all that crazy with the book budget. That was the only board comment? Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1.
D is the motion to adopt a resolution adjusting the water and wastewater connection fees for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Madam Chair, motion to adopt a resolution adjusting the water and wastewater connection fees for fiscal year 2024, 25.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schleball. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, motion to adopt reimbursement resolution for water and wastewater projects for fiscal year 24, 25.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the final millage rate resolution. Let's see here, and then
Aaron will read that in, yes?
Yes, so the name of the taxing authority is Citrus County, Florida. We have the rollback rate, which is, the current year aggregate rollback rate is 8.3286. And then the percentage change, which is 6.51. And then the le, the millage to be levied. So for countywide, we have general fund, 6.9898. Transportation, 0.9860. Health Department, 0.0564. For a countywide total of 8.0322. And then for special districts, we have library services, 0.3147. Fire rescue taxing is at zero. Fire rescue MSTU is at 0.5780. And stormwater MSTU is also at zero. So special districts total is 0.8927 for a total millage rate of 8.9249. And then, we already talked about the aggregate rollback rate of 8.3286 mils. And then the aggregate millage rate of 8.8711 mils.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, do I have a second?
I seconded it, I think.
Did you? Okay. Any board discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to bring up, Commissioner Kennard brought this up earlier, and I agree to give the sheriff his COLA increase, but hold the money for the 10 deputies until the sheriff-elect is seated. And I don't know if that's appropriate in this motion or, or how we take, make sure that's
So I would do the millage. The next is going to talk about the final budget.
Okay.
And so I would talk about it then.
Thank you.
Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1.
Okay, so G is the motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the final budget resolution. So if the consensus of the board is to have the sheriff's budget the same as the sheriff plus the 3.5% with the 10 deputies sitting in reserve, is that the consensus?
I want to say something.
Yes.
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 Say, say it again, please.
So it would be the sheriff's budget as it is for fiscal year 24, plus the 3.5% that we had put aside for reserves at the 9/11 meeting. And then the 10 additional deputy funding will stay in reserve.
I just want to bring up again, and each week, I've said this, you want to talk about spending. I think that there's an opportunity from October, November, December, for a lot of money to be wasted in that budget. And if you go ahead and give it to them, the sheriff, current sheriff right now, there are going to be things that are going to have to be corrected by the newly elected sheriff in January. And the taxpayer is going to be paying twice for some of the same stuff. And I had recommended at the last meeting that we hold back even more. And, and I don't, I don't know if anybody's still receptive to that, but
Where do you stand, Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, I brought up at the last meeting, I was nervous about not giving them any sort of an increase because I would hate to hurt our law enforcement officers that are doing the work every day. I'll reiterate once again, I'm very disappointed that there's no one here from the sheriff's office. And although this board, and understandably, saying to my budget proposal, well, we can't just randomly, the budget's already been set, take it off, but we're randomly guessing what the increase is needed at the sheriff's office. So I know, that, that, you asked my thoughts, which I guess are conflicting, like, one, we're making a guess. And honestly, nobody's here saying we absolutely need this to carry on. So I don't like the idea, but I don't want deputies not putting in the time that we need or cars being parked because the sheriff is going to say that things cost more and he doesn't have the money. So we're in a really bad position, which, if I may ask a question? I'm curious if we're keeping the 10 deputy money back, which it sounds like we're still going to do. If we kept the budget the same, is, if the sheriff needed more money in this next quarter, is he allowed to borrow forward from, you know, if it meant like deputies not getting to work? I mean, and, and could we ask for proof of that? What, what are we allowed to do at this point to make everybody happy?
So obviously, the sheriff can come and they can ask for a budget amendment, which is what will have to happen to move the funding for the 10 deputies over into their budget. And then at that time, it would be a board decision.
So if the budget was the same without this extra 3.5%, could the sheriff at some point come to us and say, this isn't cutting it, I need this amount just to get by?
Yes, the sheriff can, can come and ask for a budget amendment.
I mean, now would have been the time. Now would have been a great day, as with the last meeting.
The, the overarching issue is that we're flying blind. We are preempted by all the state rules. Once we release the money, we have no control over it. We're not allowed to audit. We don't get, necessarily get transparency. So we're flying blind with a large, large portion of the cla, the taxes, like 45% of what we collect. Something in that 40-something range. That's really uncomfortable. So.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This is a problem. We don't even know how much the sheriff This is the problem, we don't even know how much the sheriff's payroll is. We don't even know what payroll is, I've asked for three years prior to this. So I even said, okay, if we do thirty-five million and put five million into reserves for January, and then add the ten deputies that are in reserve, we can't even figure out what monthly he needs just for payroll in order to make sure that the deputies are taken care of. So all of us are up here like, well, we'll just have to give them the money. But in the meantime, we know for a fact that ten brand-new cars are going to be wrapped, the lights, wrapping minimum, minimum is going to be about seven thousand dollars per car. That doesn't, I forget that they did give us some money, a dollar amount, how much it is to outfit each car. And I can't remember, and I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm looking at you, Aaron. But there was an amount, it was a big amount.
Ninety-some odd thousand.
Okay, thank you. So ninety thousand times ten, nine hundred thousand dollars. And then a certain amount of that might very well need to be redone January seventh. So, I mean, I would love to say, listen, I ran the numbers, I did my due diligence and have been working on this for months. Okay, if we give the sheriff thirty-five million, that would be the two point six 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 million per month for three months. And we could then take that five million and then the ten officers, and if this board decides on the three percent or the three point five percent, and put that in reserves, and then the new sheriff would come and say, I need an amendment, or amendment. I think it is very dangerous to give him thirty-nine million dollars even for three months. It could be a cost of up to minimum a million dollars wasted in three months, one million dollars. Talk about books, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for books, how about a million dollars wasted in three months? Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars is over a course of twelve months. That's where your anger should go. So I propose we just give the sheriff thirty-five million, put the rest and whatever the percentage is into the reserves for the new sheriff.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
I think some people maybe know information that I don't know. Is there ten cars that aren't wrapped? Is that a thing that's out there? Is that something that they're doing?
He just bought ten new cars, business as usual. His name will be on it, the magazines will be etched with his name on it, voiding the warranty. There is over eighty thousand dollars put into a new building that has been leased. That is, I don't believe the new sheriff is even going to let the people move into the new building that eighty to a hundred thousand dollars is being spent on. Every day, there's a new amount given that is being spent, business as usual, and it's directly trying to affect the brand-new sheriff and the taxpayers. It's hitting the taxpayers, and the new sheriff might have to, I don't even, there's going to be audits that need to be paid for, evidence, financial. Evidence, financial, it's a third audit. That somehow we're going to have to come up with that money, too.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Just about the car wrapping, I'm just trying to think this all out. And again, I don't want to do anything that hurts the people that are working there. So if there's ten new cars, and we need them on the street, they have to put something on the car. Legally, I don't know that they could put Sheriff Vincent on the car, nor Woody. So I'm just trying to look at it from both sides. I want to do the right thing and not waste the money, and I get it, it's only till January. But if we need the cars on the road now.
And I, I'm sorry, I agree with her. The problem is, is those cars aren't going to be ready till the end of December. And then January seventh, one week, there's going to be about a one-week difference.
Again, it'd be nice to have a representative to flesh that out.
Commissioner Kennard?
This board's only responsibility to the sheriff's office is to set the number. That's it. And what the governor and legislature have given the sheriffs of the state great latitude in how they spend their money. If we hold back this three, three and a half percent COLA, which we know the cost of FRS, the cost of insurances, has all gone up. If we hold back that three and a half percent COLA increase in their budget, that's not going to stop the spending on the cars and the wraps and the building and all that other stuff that we're getting excited about. Understandably excited, I don't mean to minimize that. It's going to affect the people that work there. There will be a reduction in the amount of money that goes into the pockets of the sworn and unworn individuals at the sheriff's office.
Technically, then.
It's, the sheriff does not get one lump sum check for his entire budget for the year. It's broken up into twelve months, they get two of them to start with, so there is some working capital there. But then it's a monthly, it's a monthly check after that. So while I don't like what's going on, what I've heard some of the things that are going on, any more than the rest of you, our job tonight is to set a number. And we're getting way into the weeds of stuff that we have, we don't like it, but we don't have any control over that stuff.
Every single one of us backs the blue, or in this case, the green. Every single one of us is very strong on law enforcement. Technically, not doing the three and a half percent is defunding actual officers on the street. So that's why I'm in favor of releasing it, as much as it galls me what's going on. So I'm in favor of releasing the three and a half. So you've got the three of us who originally said that, and I don't know where Commissioners Schleball and Finnegan are coming down.
So then I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, I support it, I just needed to say, I just needed to vent.
There's a lot of outrage up here, and I get it, I share it. Commissioner Finnegan, where are you?
Well, what's the motion? Because I'm going to vote nay on the budget in its entirety, but I am voting yes for the three and a half percent.
Okay. Commissioner Kennard, please take over.
I made the motion to, a motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the final budget resolution that includes the three and a half percent increase for the sheriff's office over last year's budget. We will hold in reserve the amount of funding for the ten additional deputies, which I believe was around one point three million. And then ultimately, when Sheriff-elect Vincent takes over, and we're ready to move forward with those, or he's ready to move forward with those ten deputies, we'll use an additional six hundred thousand in law enforcement impact fees to get to that one point nine. Hopefully, that gets us ten new deputies getting rolling.
And I had seconded it.
And you got a second, I'm sorry, I missed making the notes on here.
Chair, can I just get clarification on that motion?
I'm pretty sure you're going to need one.
So I have a motion to adopt and authorize the chair to execute the final resolution that includes a three and a half percent increase. We will hold in reserve the one point three million, is that how you want it said? He was throwing like estimated amounts, something like one point three million.
I'll leave that part of it out of it, because I believe that's understood, that we're holding one point three million in reserves. So my motion would be to approve and authorize staff to ex, no, I'm sorry, most to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the final budget resolution, which included a three and a half percent increase to the sheriff's budget over last year.
I have a question.
And I had seconded it.
And I'm going to ask for board discussion, so you're up, go ahead.
So my question is, when we are in the eleventh hour, as I've been told, and the budget's been set, and no changes are made, where's the three and a half percent coming from?
The three and a half percent is in reserves. So all this is doing is moving that funding from the reserve account over into the sheriff's account.
She accounted for that on the September eleventh meeting, the three and a half percent.
So in reserves, then we have the seventeen percent for any sort of a disaster. And then we have the, I put my notes away, the couple million dollars for ten new deputies. And we also have three and a half percent that's in that budget.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any further board comment or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four one.
So H is the motion to approve and authorize staff to execute the vote-record final adoption of millage levy DR four eight seven V, maximum millage levy calculation final disclosure DR four twenty MM, and certification of compliance DR four eighty-seven via electronic format, also called e-trim.
I'll make the motion soon as we get a new battery here, we apparently talked too much.
Well, she read it in, you want to just yell, so moved?
Any one of you? Or good?
There it goes. No, you want to make it? No, it was at the beginning. Almost correct.
Motion to approve and authorize staff to execute the vote-record final adoption of millage levy, maximum millage levy calculation final disclosure, and certification of compliance via electronic format.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Aye is the motion.
He's here? Where is he?
Back behind Eric.
Is it too late now that we just voted? Someone should have said something earlier. You could say it out loud. Sheriff-elect Vincent is in the audience. Commissioner Baze was just saying that he may want to speak, is that true?
Motion to authorize staff and execute the certification of final taxable value upon receipt via electronic format.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schleball. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the roll-forward grant resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schleball. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the sheriff regarding the sheriff's budget allocation for fiscal year twenty-five as approved by county administrator and county attorney.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any further board discussion?
Ask the sheriff not to put his name on things on December thirty-first.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Did, at this point, is sheriff-elect allowed to come forward? There's no open to the public? Okay.
We still have a whole nother item. Okay, so five-minute recess. All the batteries are going down.
Two minutes, two minutes. Holly, can she move forward on U one? We can get him changed while she talks. Yeah, she's right there. Oh, because of the batteries?
Yes.
Is her battery okay, though, Kat?
No, I have to change all of them.
Weird. Does it say how long it is? My battery looks good. Are we in recess or? We're not recessed.
I got one last sip of coffee, so I go and I drink my mouth, and as it hits my mouth, I suddenly have this overwhelming need to sleep. And so I bent over, because I'm trying to get it swallowed, half-successful, the rest caught out of my nose, like a freaking coffee fountain. And so I texted, I texted my cell phone, and I'm like, please tell me that this is not a shot of me. Trey Maitland, yes and less.
Call this meeting back to order, up to U two, our final item for the evening.
All right, commissioners, this is an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, modifying the Citrus County five-year capital improvement schedule set forth in Table twelve-one of the capital improvements.